Hello, everyone. I hope you're doing well. Good to see you as you turn on your screens or your visual. I understand we are being recorded as I speak, so I think that's a new function of how we're managing our Zoom meetings. Thank you, everyone. I see our guests are here. I see all our council members are here. I see our staff who will be assisting today is here. Assistant City Manager De La Rosa, I believe you're functioning as Deputy Clerk this evening. And Ms. Roxanne Stone, thank you in advance for both of your assistance. And I will try to do my best clicking on the different tabs that I have. Ms. Lawton and Ms. Arnold, I see your names and we will come on at the appropriate time after tonight's proclamation. Happy to see that everyone is on. It's 5:59. You know, I'm looking for Superintendent Hearst, Dr. Hearst, but I don't see him just yet. And I'm hopeful he'll join us at the due time. Okay.
Excuse me, trustee Smith, did you need Louis Fries brought up forward?
I think that it would be great if Mr. Fries was here. He is in charge of facilities, so it would be nice if he was here. He would be able to answer some of the questions. So thank you so much, Councilwoman Toms. I appreciate that.
Sure.
And Mayor Rubin, I am texting Dr. Hearst now.
Thank you. Well, it is 6:01 and it is August 17, 2021. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us and guests, welcome to the regular meeting of the Pinellas City Council. I am calling this meeting to order. Can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in honor of the U.S. Military Troops? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Deputy City Clerk De La Rosa, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Toms.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, here.
Okay. Councilmember Tave.
Here.
Mayor Protem Salimi.
Here.
Mayor Martinez-Rubin.
Here.
City Manager Murray.
Here.
And City Attorney Casher.
Here.
Yes, Mayor, the agenda was posted on Thursday, August 12 at 5:00 p.m. with all legally required notices. You will have revised report for 7A, which was distributed to the council and posted online for the public viewing after the posting of the agenda. As far as any conflicts of interest, does the council have any conflict of interest to report on any agenda tonight? Seeing none, that concludes this report.
Thank you, Mr. De La Rosa. There is not a closed session this evening, so we will go to item 5A, Citizens to be Heard. For all citizens who are joining us this evening, you will have done so via the Zoom webinar ID number that appears on the screen, 893-3500-0272, or by phone, 1-669-900-6833. I will open the public comment period for the item you wish to speak on, and please let our staff know that you wish to speak by using the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen, or press star 9 to alert staff that you'd like to comment if you are on the phone, and then press star 6 to unmute once you are called in. For those of you watching us via Comcast Channel 26, the council, as yourself, will hear public comments, but there is no visual, and there will be a timer on the screen letting the people who are making public comment know that they have a time period of up to three minutes. And all citizens to be heard may speak under any item not listed on the agenda. The time limit is three minutes and is subject to modification by me. Individuals may not share or offer time to another speaker pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act. No action may be taken on a matter unless it is listed on the agenda or unless certain emergency or special circumstances exist. The city council may direct staff to investigate and or schedule certain matters for consideration at a future council meeting. And Deputy City Clerk De La Rosa, are there any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we do have public comments, and I'll have Ms. Stone mention those.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have a few public comments. We will first hear from Rafael Minas.
Greetings, Mayor, Council, staff, and members of the public. Today, I'd like to talk about two topics. First, I'd like to thank the Pinellas Police Department in general and Officer Dean in specific for their transparency around the officer-involved shooting on, I believe it was August 8th. The way that the police department did reporting about the incident and provided the video on it on Facebook was an excellent model of transparency, and the way that Officer Dean handled disarming the suspect while using the minimal amount of force is an exemplary use of police force and should be commended. Secondly, I'd note that everybody should have gotten your ballots for the gubernatorial recall election, which is currently ongoing, which will conclude on September 14th. I encourage you to send those ballots back in. If you're in favor of a Republican being governor, you should vote yes on the recall measure, and then for whichever Republican you desire to be governor on the back half of the ballot. If you are not in favor of a Republican being governor, you should vote no on the recall measure, and then for whoever you want on the back half of the ballot, or no one at all. The reason for this is that due to the way that the recall is designed, Governor Newsom is only on one half of the ballot, the first half. Therefore, if there's a narrow majority to recall him, his replacement could be elected by any plurality margin. So let's say the highest plurality count got 10% of the vote, and everybody else got 9% or less, and Newsom got, say, 49% of the vote to remain in office. Therefore, the effective vote of 49% of the voters would have been overridden by 51% on one level. On another level, it would have been overridden by 10%. So I suggest you take that into consideration when voting on the recall. I believe that you should vote on the recall. Thank you.
And now we will have public comments from Debbie, no last name mentioned.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I hope this didn't go wrong, and good evening, Council. I wanted to take a moment to express my sadness for all the families in Afghanistan that are still in the throes of evacuation, and I'd like to read something that was sent to me and thus reflects my thoughts as well on the subject. This author is Robert L. and his last initial is H. "We, the people, have paid a heavy price, both in lives and tax dollars, in defending Afghanistan. However, it can be said, in the best case, we bought 20 years of homeland security. Sadly, this exit plan was reckless, dishonorable, and irresponsible, putting at risk the lives of thousands of Americans and Afghans. Not only can we do better, we should have done better. Our heartfelt thanks to all who served, and especially to the families who lost their loved ones in the ultimate sacrifice to preserve our freedom and safety. Unfortunately, on this upcoming 9/11, we will probably be much more unsafe. In this vein, and directing my comments to Councilman Murphy, this is why we stand for the flag and Pledge of Allegiance, to give thanks, especially tonight, to our military and their families that have continued to fight for those of us at home and abroad. If you are reading something more in what our flag represents to further your own unknown agenda, then once again, I request that you share that with the citizens of this community. I will close my comments with respectful thanks to those that keep us all safe without regards to politics." Thank you.
And now, public comment from Alexander Jason.
Okay, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. I want to address my remarks to the actions of Councilmember Vincent Salimi, about which is known as the Salimi scandal. In the last council meeting, Mr. Salimi changed his vote he had made the previous meeting to support the funding of improvements to the Faria House. This change in vote was, I believe, the direct result of his cowardly bending to political pressure, which he attempted to conceal in a pathetic attempt to describe it as a common law conflict of interest, which does not exist. It was completely fabricated as a political payoff to people who threatened to withdraw support for Salimi's reelection if he supported the history museum funding. Mr. Salimi is a public official, and it is his responsibility and duty to publicly state the reason for his vote reversal and the persons who prompted him to do this. I will remind you and everyone else of the statement that Mr. Salimi made in November 2019. Quote, "History is not obscure or unimportant. It holds a mirror up to the present and helps us move forward based on the past. The decisions made for our future are based on what came before us. The ability to examine and view artifacts brings history to life. Seeing, touching, and feeling artifacts make them more real and relatable. Just as we trace our family roots and ancestry, we can also trace the roots of our city and the history of those who came before us. Libraries and museums maintain a record of who and what we are. Those who came before us and helped found Pinellas include the Wichita Indians, Don Pedro Foggus, Don Ignacio Martinez, Bernardo Fernandez, Dr. Samuel Tennant, Edward Downer, and the Faria family. They are the root of our identity. They help spur our economic growth. The Pinellas History Museum would help establish a link between Pinellas' past and its future." These are the words of Councilmember Salimi in November 2019. He now hopes they will be forgotten, but I will tell you that they will not be forgotten. Mr. Salimi has betrayed the city of Pinellas and the founding citizens of Pinellas, in particular, the Faria sisters, who were promised that their childhood home would be turned into a history museum to honor their past and the other founders of Pinellas. I will remind you that the city of Pinellas agreed to move the house from its original location for this purpose. Mr. Salimi, your turnaround vote was a violation of that promise and a betrayal to the people of Pinellas. In view of the fact that you've shown yourself to be unworthy of trust and transparency, the people of Pinellas will know that you are always willing to change your vote for the right price.
And lastly, public comment from Cordell Kendrick.
Cordell, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, good evening, Mayor Rubin, Councilmembers. I was looking at the minutes from the last, the June meeting, and I was kind of disappointed because the budget process takes a little longer than I anticipated because I've been in similar meetings that have gone until after 10 o'clock at night. And so, to me, that's a burden to city staff because they have to be here the next morning. So hopefully, you will prioritize the table, some of the items, the next time when the, when staff is more refreshed. That's one. And then number two is, I have a future agenda request to bring to you all. So if you recall when Management Partners came and gave a presentation on the priorities for 2021 regarding the budget, it dawned on me. I was thinking that you should consider having Coffin Associates to be the correct firm to do the class and comp study because I was looking at the priorities for the fiscal year, and I'm thinking that that's not a bad idea, having Coffin Associates to do a class and comp study. So I would like to relay that to the staff to see if that can possibly be put on the agenda at some point. So that's all. And hopefully, I will come visit you all in person when we don't have to wear masks and everything. So I will turn it back over to Mayor Rubin to continue the meeting. That's it.
There are no more public comments. Thank you, Ms. Stone. I will close the public comment period, and thanks, everyone who has submitted a comment. We will move on to the next part of our agenda, which is recognitions and presentations. We have two matters. The first is a proclamation for Friends of the Pinellas Creek Watershed's 20th anniversary. Councilmembers, as has been our practice, are you ready to read the proclamation as a group? Please have that text available, and I will begin doing the same. And here goes tab number three on my screen, so let's see that I do this correctly. Here we go. "Honoring the 20th anniversary of Friends of Pinellas Creek Watershed. Whereas in 2001, Carol Arnold and Dr. Joel Mariotti founded the Friends of Pinellas Creek Watershed organization to unify a diverse community that is actively involved in its stewardship and..."
"Whereas Friends of Pinellas Creek Watershed volunteers have worked for 20 years in numerous ways and with diverse partners to accomplish results that benefit the Pinellas Creek Watershed and its inhabitants, humans and otherwise. And whereas among the accomplishments are projects of flood control, ecological restoration, quality educational opportunities, and numerous cleanups in the upper watershed from the month of Pinellas Creek and beyond and..."
"Whereas Friends of Pinellas Creek Watershed has partnered with Earth Team at Pinellas Valley High School to reinvigorate the native plant garden adjacent to the Pinellas Library, worked with the Contra Costa Resource Conservation District and the East Bay Municipal Utility District on the I-80 Fish Passage Project, allowing Steelhead access to and from spawning grounds along the creek, partnered with the city of Pinellas and the Contra Costa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District to construct and monitor the Pinellas Creek Demonstration Project, restoring tidal marsh and riparian vegetation and reducing the flood risk along the lower run of the creek. Created an interactive map of the creek, highlighting features and public access points, collected scientific data providing benchmark information as to water quality and invertebrate populations, partnered with Thriving Earth Exchange to assess trash in the watershed, and with the city of Pinellas and many community groups, educated and entertained children and their families at Kids Creek Fest to help teach people about this important natural resource and..."
"Whereas the community awareness of the watershed and what it takes to care for it has grown, and Pinellas schools now use the creek as a living outdoor classroom. And whereas Friends of Pinellas Creek Watershed honors co-founder Joe Mariotti, who passed in 2013, and his lasting legacy, the mantra of 'Do It', inspiring all those within earshot and..."
"And whereas in all endeavors, Friends of Pinellas Creek Watershed, a small volunteer organization, has engaged with a variety of groups, organizations, individuals, and local government, consistently striving to work together and steward a healthy watershed for the benefit of the community." Madam Mayor, you're muted.
And we do not want that last whereas on mute. So here we go. Now, therefore, I, Norma Martinez-Rubin, Mayor of the city of Pinellas, County of Contra Costa, State of California, on behalf of the city council and city of Pinellas, do hereby recognize the 20 years of dedication and service of the Friends of Pinellas Creek Watershed to help make Pinellas a vibrant and healthy community through its stewardship of our valuable natural resources. I encourage all residents to celebrate and reflect upon the influential and lasting contributions of Friends of Pinellas Creek Watershed for the preservation and protection of the watershed. I am very pleased to have this proclamation available to one of the co-founders who has joined us this evening, and also there is one other member of Friends of Pinellas Creek Watershed, Ms. Arnold. Would you care to make any comments?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, on behalf of the Friends of Pinellas Creek Watershed, thank you for recognizing our group and contributions this evening. I would also like to thank the Pinellas City Council 20 years ago, who helped Dr. Joe and me as we tried to get our little nonprofit organized. In particular, Pete Murray was very helpful. I remember in the beginning, he was a little dubious. He referred to us as Creek People, but he shared our passion for Pinellas Creek and for the environment and helped us for many years. I would also like to recognize our very hardworking volunteers and our talented board members who have served for 20 years. They are Tim McDonough, Bert Mulcahy, Carol Thompson, and Bill Voight. And we were fortunate to be able to add Ann Moriarty in 2013. The Friends of Pinellas Creek Watershed has served as the community partner working with many agencies... working with many agencies on implementing restoration projects. And in particular, I'm very proud of our contributions on the Pinole Creek Demonstration Project, which was led by the city and the Flood Control District, the Povon Creeks Restoration led by East Bay Mud, and the Pinole Creek Fish Passage, which was led by the Contra Costa Water, Contra Costa Resource Conservation District. So thank you again for honoring us this evening with this proclamation, and we look forward to working more to make improvements in the Pinole Creek Watershed.
Thank you very much for your time, dedication, stewardship, and your energy. So very pleased to have you among us. Ms. Lawton, are you interested in making any comments? I see that you're also on the line. And please unmute yourself, too. Thank you.
Okay. I just second what Carol Arnold said.
Well, then, I'll take that.
It's been a pleasure to work with the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting you, but I thought I heard a big echo to everything that Ms. Arnold said. Thank you both for joining us. Have a great rest of the evening. We're going to continue with our meeting, and I will gladly make the official printed version of this proclamation available to you within the week. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And for all Friends of Pinole Creek Watershed. We'll move on to the next item of the agenda. And pardon me, I am, as I click tabs here. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Superintendent Hurst and also Trustee Smith Folds, representing the West.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. May Larisha Martin please be promoted to panelist. I'm so sorry to interrupt. She is part of the presentation.
So we have Ms. Martin, okay, as part of the presentation. And this is a presentation then by representatives of the West Contra Costa Unified School District on the fall reopening. And we're eager to hear you. What we're expecting is a 10 to 15-minute presentation, followed by time for questions and answers. So thank you for keeping to that time so that we may proceed and have a lively exchange. And also, of course, in advance, know that you are welcome to join us at a future time. So we ran out of time for the question and answers. Thank you. Who will go first?
I'll be going first. Dr. Hurst.
Hi, Dr. Hurst. Can I introduce you real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, City of Pinole. Thank you so much for allowing WCCUSD to come here tonight and talk to you about our fall reopening and all the exciting things that are happening with the district. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce our new superintendent, Dr. Hurst. Thank you so much, Dr. Hurst. He is a new hire to the district, and we are really excited for all that he is going to bring to our school district. So, Dr. Hurst, take it away. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Trustee Smith Folds. And I'm sure if there is the presentation, if that presentation can be brought up. Thank you. I wanted to introduce two members of my team of the executive cabinet who's going to be helping to present. We have our Chief Academic Officer, Larisha Martin, here that will be presenting as well, and also our Maintenance and Operations Chief that will be presenting. And his name is Lewis Freeze. So I wanted to start off by just sharing with you, one of our schools within our district is the West County Mandarin School. We're very proud of this school. It is a dual immersion, dual-language immersion program. And I'll talk about that in a second. But we do have an exciting program at this school that we want to make you aware of. You may be already aware of this, that it is an IB school international back Lord program. So we really wanted to share with you just a little bit about what the IB is. And again, you may already know, but they really have a global focus. It is a very rigorous curriculum. And when I say a global focus, really, when I think of a globally competent student, they really focus on things like making sure the students have the skills to investigate the world once they graduate, making sure that they can effectively communicate ideas, making sure that they can recognize perspectives that may be different from their own. And then also, making sure that those students are prepared in a way that they can take action on real-world problems like COVID. So again, they have a very rigorous course of curriculum. It's globally focused, so I wanted to share that with you. And they do get college credit as well. To earn college credit, they have to score a five, six, or seven on the end-of-course exam. And their curriculum, and I talked about the rigorous course of curriculum, but they have six main areas of study, which are similar to the traditional core courses that students take. However, they go more into detail. They're more rigorous and challenging as well. And one of those areas I'll point out to you is a study in language. I will share with you that in IB program, there are also three other components. So there is a theory course that students have to take, a theory of knowledge course. There's also experiential learning outside of the classroom that happens. And then also, there's a 4,000-word essay. So if we can go to the next slide. We also wanted to share with you, as I shared, it's a dual-language immersion program. They have 90/10 models, which means 90% is spoken in that language, like Mandarin, then 10% English, but this is a 50/50 model, which means that students are taught Mandarin for 50% of the school day, and the other 50% of the school day, they're taught English. And they have separate teachers for these classrooms. They partner with one another, and they just switch teachers to learn the Mandarin and the English. Next slide. And they also are part of the partnership that we have with Pinole Valley High School and Pinole Middle School. It's a global ambassador program, grade seven through 12, and also focuses on opportunities to learn additional language. Next slide. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Martin for this one.
Hello, everyone. I am going to take us through Pinole Valley High School IB program and go over a couple of slides. So I'll start with this first one, which is our lovely, brand-new Pinole Valley High School. You can go to the next slide. And piggybacking off what Dr. Hurst said, these are the IB learner profile characteristics that students will leave being able to be enquirers, knowledgeable thinkers, communicators, principled, open-minded, caring, risk-takers, balanced, and reflective. So that is the goals of a learner profile for an IB school for Pinole Valley. Next slide. The approaches to teaching and learning for IB, and I won't go over all of these, but all IB courses are based on inquiry, really focused on conceptual understanding. And the other bullets that are listed here, you know, really being able to be developed in your local and global context, so really ensuring that you have a worldview, and also focus on effective teamwork and collaboration, and really removing barriers, barriers from learning. And it's really also informed by assessment, formative and summative assessment data for our students. And essentially, so that we can develop these skills for our students. We really want our students to be critical thinkers, to be creative, innovative, have strong communication skills, social skills, self-management, and research skills. And so this is the approach to teaching and learning in our IB courses. Next slide. A course candidate, there are two ways you can be an IB to IB at Pinole Valley High. And so the first one is you can take one or more IB classes based on interest, or you can also be a diploma candidate. And so you take one IB class in each of the six subject groups. And then you're actually in pursuit of an IB diploma. Next slide. There are two different levels. IB classes are offered at two different levels. So there's the standard level, and then there's the higher level. The standard level means that you receive 150 hours of required curriculum, and you take, you have honors GPA, and this is for one or two years. And then you have the higher level, which is 240 hours of curriculum, honors GPA, and always taken over two years. And there's an end-of-course exam, which may translate to college credit. And both levels of these, of IB, are basically in advanced, in rigor and in pace. And so all of the courses are also UC and AG compliant, and will ensure that students have, meet the state and local graduation requirements. A note about honors classes and how to prepare. Essentially, all of the classes at Pinole Valley High, the IB classes are considered college prep classes. There's also an IB boot camp that can help boost student speed for rigor and speed. I mean, there is a teacher at Pinole Valley High. Her name is Ms. Kim Lee, who actually is going to be supporting students with this IB boot camp. These are the six areas that I previously just mentioned. So these are the subject groups that you can decide to go into if you are, if you select into IB. So the first one is really studying languages and literature. The second group is really focused on language acquisition, which can be Spanish or Mandarin. The third group is really focused on individuals and society, history of the Americas. Then Group Four is on sciences and biology. Group Five is really focused on mathematics and math analysis and approaches. And then Group Six is focused on arts and elective and visual arts. And these are the pathways. So if you choose into these groups, these are some of the courses that you would take. This is Pathway Number Two, IB Pathway Number Two. And these are some of the courses that you would actually take as an example if you go into Pathway Two. And what I actually included here was actually IB enrollment data. And I don't believe you can click on this because this is an internal dashboard, but I did want to share that for the AP courses at Pinole Valley High, last year, in 2019, 2020, there were 273 students enrolled in the AP courses. And currently, we have AP seniors and IB juniors who are enrolled, and the number is actually 442. So this demand for the IB courses is actually growing from 47% to 74%. So the participation rate has actually grown from 1920 to 21, I mean, to 2021. And so the change is plus 26%. Another thing that I wanted to make sure I noted was also the enrollment breakdown participation rate by ethnicity. So we have 84% of our Asian students who are participating. But we also have, the highest increase is what our Black and African-American students, which is at a plus 32%. And so we have 63% opting into these AP senior and IB junior courses. And for Hispanics, we're at 71% for 2021, multiracial, 63%, and for white, 84%. And so I think it's important for us to also look at our subgroup data when we're talking about who is enrolling in our IB courses. And so that is something that we wanted to make sure that we also looked at. And then I just wanted to end with just some quotes from a couple of students regarding the IB courses. And one student said, "I believe that my experience in the IB program was successful as I was able to grow as a person. I became more outgoing and collaborative. I also was able to develop my writing skills and critical thinking. Overall, IB has prepared me for college courses to come." And this is from an 11th-grade African-American student. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Freeze, I imagine you're going to be next. And if you can keep your comments to about five minutes, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you and welcome for having me back. And so it's been a while since we presented on Pinole. So if you could present the next slide. So we have three projects currently happening within the city of Pinole. So the first one is actually Pinole Valley High. We're on our final phase to complete the high school. I'm happy to say that our contractor mobilized over the last week. Construction actually started yesterday and today with some light demolition on site. And just to review what the project consists of, and again, it's the final phase. So we are rebuilding the tennis courts that had been covered up by portals for a number of years on the upper plateau. We're resurfacing the track surface and replacing the football field turf, if you will, replacing what was the temporary campus with a new softball combination baseball field. And we're taking down the existing portals that were out there that housed Kovar's Kitchen and the restrooms and building a new facility out there, which will be inclusive of restrooms, a kitchen, and a weight room for the sports activities. As well as we're replacing the home field bleachers. Those will be coming down with a brand-new press box and sound system for the field and replacing the visitors' bleachers with another set of low-rise bleachers on the other side. So this project is slated to complete by the fall of '22. With our first phase will be the completion of the tennis courts as we work kind of clockwise around the campus, doing the tennis courts and moving back to the field. So for the field itself, it's currently open for practice for Pinole Valley High for the football season. All games are being held at Contra Costa College for home games. And if you'd like to receive more information, we have a newsletter that goes out once a month. You can see the QR code that's in the bottom right-hand corner, and also where you could get the link to this. In the past, we used to send our newsletters to Pinole Cable. If that's something you'd like us to do, we can do that as well. And they used to be streamed on Pinole Cable. So if you could just let us know on that one. Our next slide. Our last two projects are currently under design. And again, this is part of the bond program. These were part of our, what we consider, critical needs coming out, Measure D and E. And so Shannon Elementary School, for Shannon Elementary School, they've had a multipurpose room that had been a portable structure for many, many years. And this project will replace that portable building with a new multipurpose room and stage with an outdoor shade and lunch shelter. We're currently under design right now on that particular project. As well as for Collins Elementary, Collins was slated for electrical upgrade as well as air conditioning to be added to that campus in the multipurpose room and in the classrooms. And so that's currently under design as well. And so we're hoping to enter into the State Architects Office this spring with those projects, and we'll be working through those in the coming months. So that's kind of the update on the projects for Pinole. Next slide. And next slide. And so getting facilities ready for school. So school opened on Monday, and I'm happy to say that I have visited most all of the Pinole schools, had a chance to sit with the principals and observe the students. And happy to say, from the facility's perspective, very little concerns. Again, we're back practicing, social distancing, hand sanitation. We have closed off our drinking fountains and providing water fill stations for the students and where we don't have that. Pinole is one we're working on, Pinole Valley High, I should say. We do have a couple of bottle filler stations. We're providing water to them right now and working on solutions for that one. Again, you know, social distancing and sanitation is our number-one concern as well as air filtration within the classrooms with HEPA filters where needed. We've increased MIRF-13 filters where we have forced air ventilation. Next slide. So meals are currently being served to students and we're working on outdoor dining. So while our multipurpose rooms can house our students, we're working on how to provide outdoor dining spaces for them as well so that students won't face each other as they're dining. So I know most school sites that I've visited are doing a combination of indoor and outdoor services. Again, classrooms considerations, our desks are spaced, trying to provide three-foot separation where we can adhering to our CDHP guidelines. Entrances are well-marked and labeled as you come onto campus to identify where we are. We're limiting the number of parents that actually can come onto campus. They need to notify the office in advance before they can come on, so trying to restrict the amount of people that are on campus. And again, the outdoor use of space is provided to the students as they can play on the playgrounds. Again, masking is required for all students, both inside and outside when on campus. Next slide. Safety guidelines, again, I think I kind of covered most of these items before, just talking, um, again, about etiquette as far as being masked, um, following our safety protocols and social distancing. Um, wearing your mask at all times. And Dr. Hurst, I don't know if you want to pick up from here?
Yes, I think I'll just reiterate here, um, we need to step up our safety guidelines. And you can see, uh, there at the middle of the page, uh, that we were sharing that masking is mandated indoors, but we recently mandated, uh, masking outdoors as well. Also, you can see that we're following state, uh, requirements, uh, guidelines, uh, from the governor that, uh, all employees must show proof of vaccination or they submit to a weekly testing. So we are, we are doing weekly testing for our staff. Next slide. I wanted to share with you also that, uh, inside the classroom, instructionally speaking, we're really focusing on social and emotional learning, uh, big focus on, um, our relationships with our students and our families. Uh, our students have been disconnected from one another over the past year and a half and our adults as well. So we're really, uh, looking at the concept of home visits. Doesn't necessarily mean we're knocking on the doors, but it may mean you're getting a, a email or a text message or a phone call from a teacher just to check in on those families. Uh, really focusing on, uh, family nights also, building trust within the families. Um, and fostering those relationships with the students and the families. Next slide. This coincides with the previous slide where we're really focusing on a goal of making sure that all students, every single student has an individualized learning plan, uh, which really means that our teachers know our students well enough that they know the different learning needs of our students. And we're making sure that we have things in place for our students. So we are looking at, um, interventions that we have in place. We're looking at, uh, multi-tiered systems that we can put in place for our students. Uh, I talked about social emotional learning and the concept of circles, which is really imagining that our students are actually in a big circle and we're doing activities designed for them to connect with one another and for us to check in with them as adults to students. Next slide. There's also a very big focus, um, uh, this year, especially the opening and really throughout the year on acceleration, um, interventions I've talked about. Uh, really looking at, um, expanded learning opportunities for students tutoring. Uh, you may have heard, um, counselors, and we really have reduced the counselor, counselor workload for our counselors by hiring twenty additional counselors. We've also been able to reduce the class size for our students across K through twelve. We also looked at SB three twenty-eight, which allowed us to look at the research around when students are supposed to start school and what's best for them. So in the middle school, we was able to move that time, the start time to eight o'clock. And in high school, we was able to move that start time to eight-thirty. And again, that's based on research about when students really should, uh, start school and especially those middle and high school age students. Next slide. And so this slide is really designed to share with you, we've really been very thoughtful about, uh, what our board has been saying about a reimagined start. Um, so not just having our kids come back into the same situation, but really looking at checking in with our kids, the social emotional learning and meeting their needs. So we've really been working behind the scenes with our principals and now with our teachers on what the first six weeks look like, what does the culture look like, what does the climate look like? There also is a, an instructional plan that has been developed and is continually, continuing to be developed also with our ed services team and being delivered to our teachers and our principals. Next slide. And that's all that we have to present to you. And so we went over a little bit of time, Ms. Mayor.
Well, Dr. Hurst, first of all, welcome to the Bay Area. Welcome to Pinole. Glad to meet you via Zoom. At one point, we will shake hands and everything else that goes along with the more proper welcome. And for your team, to your team as well, thank you very much for presenting, seeing you again, Mr. Freeze, after several years, glad to see that, um, there's a little bit of a number, a little bit of construction-related project activity for the multiple schools here in Pinole. Um, with our time, I'd like to, oh, open up to questions from the council, council members, if you would have, um, given our time. Uh, your top two questions to the school district representatives here, knowing that we can follow up, should there be more? Uh, Councilmember Tom's, please.
Sure, I, I wanted to welcome, um, uh, Dr. Hurst to the, um, city of Pinole. And actually formally welcome, uh, Trustee Smith. I don't think that we've had you, um, as a guest at the council. Thank you. And also, um, Ms. Martin and Mr. Freeze, welcome. Um, my top two questions, um, for Ms. Martin, can you confirm, uh, you mentioned the AG, A to G requirements for a degree? You're referring to a bachelor's degree, aren't you, for graduation? And I, I think my, my question is, um, the IB classes, are they similar to classes, um, like AP classes where a student can get credit towards their college degree?
Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, I was having a hard time finding my cursor. Um, I, the A through G requirements are the requirements that are needed for a student to go to a UC. So those are the A through G requirements. So there, those are the courses that are required for students to be able to be UC qualified. Um, what was the next part of the question?
Well, I was, I was kind of curious if the A through Gs were part of like a lower division college course, similar to how the AP classes can count towards a lower division degree? If, if a student were to pass a test.
Okay, um, Dr. Hurst, do you want to interject? I'm, I'm not, I'm not one hundred percent sure I understand the question.
Yeah, so, so I, I talked about this just a little bit. So absolutely, in the IB curriculum, um, if a student scores, uh, a five, six, or a seven, so it's very similar to AP, and AP they have to score a three, four, or five. And if they score a five, six, or a seven, then they do get that, that college credit. So AP, it's a AP exam, and then IB is an end-of-course exam.
That's outstanding. Um, I think if more students knew about that, they might opt to, to do that, to, to cut down their, um, college costs and time. And then, um, the other question that I have is, um, I clicked, quickly went on to the, um, Citizens Bond Oversight Board website, and I noticed that there were ten vacancies on the board and one of them being a representative from Pinole. Are, is the board and staff looking at reconstituting that CBOC to the five required seats? Or should we be actively trying to fill that seat from, uh, one of our citizens here in Pinole?
So we're currently working on our CBOC policy right now with our board and our committee. Um, so more to come on it, um, but there will be some changes to the policy.
Okay. Thank you both.
Councilmember Tate?
I, I first want to say welcome, Dr. Hurst and team. Uh, and yeah, I didn't realize that, that, uh, after Councilmember Tom's had mentioned it. Um, Trustee Smith, uh, welcome. Um, the, I, I just want to first say thank you. I know this has been a difficult time, uh, especially for the schools and moving back to, with all the students. Um, I know that you guys instituted the whole student approach. I think that's fantastic, especially since everything that's, the students and parents have been through over the last, uh, year and a half slash two years. Um, it, that, that's a great, great approach. Um, I also know that, I wanted to point out that some schools are, are looping, um, the teachers, which I think is another fantastic way to try to get all those, our students back on track. So, um, thank you. Uh, one thing I wanted to ask was, uh, 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 Mr. Freeze, if you can, um, just explain the three feet and the six feet. Um, you might have thrown some parents, uh, when the expectation might be six feet. But if you could just briefly touch on, on why, uh, the spacing was three feet in the presentation?
So currently, the guidelines have been reduced where the, where, um, the minimum is three foot where possible. So that six foot was, um, moved away from by the CDHP, uh, within their guidelines. And that's why the difference between the six-foot spacing and three-foot spacing.
And does that have something to do with the, the age of the student?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Uh, the age of the student, being that some students are vaccinated, some, uh, I mean, you know, depending on the age?
Yeah, no, it does not speak to age. It, it is just where the, where the county, where, where the, uh, health department is moving with the knowledge they know about, um, the COVID virus itself.
Great, thank you. And then the next question I had was, uh, regards to protocol, um, and, and, and tracking, uh, COVID cases and trying to see if this is working, right? Um, what is the district doing to some, you know, track whether or not the spacing is working, if COVID cases are going up or they're going down? How are you, um, communicating that back to the parents and, and, uh, to the health department as well?
So I'm going to turn that to Dr. Hurst. Um, but we are do, doing contact tracing, uh, when there is a known case. Um, we are doing testing within the schools, um, so there is selective testing within the schools. Um, so we started testing yesterday and that'll be going on this week as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, those are the two and a half questions, uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Tate, and Councilmember Murphy.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Hurst. Great to meet you, looking forward to meeting you in person. Um, you are, from what I can tell, incredibly exceptional. So we are so lucky to have you, please don't leave us. Um, and of course, Trustee Smith Folds, thank you so much, it's great to see you here. And even Mr. Freeze, it's been a long time since our CPOC days, so it's great to see you and, um, great to see you doing well and, and thriving and healthy. Um, I do have two questions, maybe two point seven five. Um, I am, so I, my first question is really in, in the conversation around the pandemic, one of the critical issues that came base from for many families in the district, both based on your website, but also, um, your communication and also anecdotal evidence I received from our community in Pinole, uh, was access to Wi-Fi and broadband. And so, um, I'd love for you to explain, you know, a status update on how we're doing around that issue. But my main question is, do you have any data or any takeaways you can provide us, um, on this issue? And as it pertains to students and the families, particularly in Pinole?
Um, I don't know, you know, we do not have our chief, uh, technology officer with us tonight. Um, so I'd really like to try to defer those questions to her and if we could get your response back. But we have provided hotspots to all of our students that needed conductivity. So, uh, even during, um, the COVID, um, distance learning period, um, we tried to make sure that every student had access, um, via Wi-Fi, whether it was a hotspot or if they had home access.
Yeah. Great, I mean, do you think you can get, when you say you can get back to us, do you think you would have that information provided, it's just a matter of getting back to us about it?
I, I believe it's just information we need to get from our chief, uh, technology officer to be more specific on some of the data you might request.
Great, that'd be, that would be wonderful. Uh, and our, uh, follow-up to that question, um, of course, could just be again, how it's impacting folks in Pinole before, well, at the start of the pandemic, I'd love to see kind of a status update on how Pinoleans are being impacted by, um, a lack of access of Wi-Fi. And if, you know, the problem has, of course, like improved, that'd be great to know as well. Um, so thank you for that. My other question was in guard, in the regards to, um, what was a major event last summer? Um, and there's been so many things that have happened over the last several, over the last almost two years, um, that it doesn't even seem like, you know, it seems like a lot has just happened and transpired. But last summer in June of twenty twenty, um, in Pinole, there was one of the largest protests in history in our town. Um, nearly a thousand people came out to Fernandez Park. Um, I attended myself on the protest, which was organized by Pinole Valley High School students. Um, really incredible, incredible students. I think some, several of them have graduated since, which is great. But many of them came out, um, and called for one, well, several demands, but one main demand, which is racial justice here in Pinole, an investment in youth programs, and more focus, uh, really on youth development overall. And so my question to you all, I know you all talked a lot about IB programs and, um, you know, just what's going on in the schools. Um, we most recently also had a student actually write to every council member here about developing a youth council. Um, there's a lot going on, and I know there's a lot going on. You all are dealing with so much going on in the schools, but I'm a council member and my hope is to also think holistically about young people who are going to be a part of our town in the future. So my question to you all is, how can we work with the district to support your racial equity work, seeing that it's something that's important to the student body? And then in terms of kind of tapping on to the youth council and this ask from the student at Pinole Valley High School, how are you seeking the help of, of cities and in terms of what students do after school and how we can collaborate more?
I'll talk about the, uh, the racial inequities or racial justice, uh, component. And I know, um, our, one of our board members that are here presently, uh, has shared, uh, with me individually and also in open public meeting about, uh, racial equity across the system. And really, how do we make sure that all of our schools are, um, equitable in education? So one of the things I have shared with everyone, I'm being very methodical about our, our systems and processes that we put, are putting in place. And we've really divided the year up into four stages. So you heard me talk a little bit about restoring. Um, so we have a restoring phase that we're going through right now. Um, part of that is, uh, social emotional learning and really checking with our kids and checking in with our adults. And there's a lot of, uh, pieces that go into that. And there's a piece of literature that we're all reading around that as well. Uh, the next phase is around visioning. Um, so we're really trying to, even in this phase, trying to identify our gaps. Um, and I'm sorry, our next phase is actually assessing. And so we're actually finding out our gaps right now. And then the next phase after that is visioning. So what we imagine right between October and January timeframe is that we're really having those conversations about what we want our students to know and be able to do when they graduate. So looking at a gradual profile, looking at a, a vision around, um, equity and justice. So this speaks to what you were saying, sir. Looking around a, around a vision of, uh, instruction as well. Having a conversation about core values and mission. So right around, um, October timeframe, you're going to see us, after the assessment phase, present some findings and gaps and analysis to our board and to our community. And when we get to October, January timeframe, that's the time for everyone, including the mayor, city council, uh, persons to join into the conversation about our kids. So this speaks directly to what you're saying. October, January timeframe is the perfect time for have, to have those equity conversations. What I have shared with my team and somewhat to the board and community, I wrote out a, a plan on how we could implement those conversations and how we could, can look at the top, um, um, equity issues in our area. How we can define that, how we can look at equity core values as well, how we can define our vision. So that's the time for us to have those conversations. I will also share with you, I'm a big proponent of student voice. Um, and I know that, um, that was a big piece for me when I got here, that I reached out to my students. So I immediately reached out to, um, our student reps. I had conversations with them and I asked them, I'm, I'm interested in hearing student voice, what else can I do? So they invited me to the student council. Um, and I spoke to the students that were there as well. And I shared with them, um, I'm looking for their feedback because we're doing this work for them. Um, so I am a big proponent of student voice. I hear you loud and clear. I'm very interested in partnering with you, especially if you're interested in, uh, youth council, anything, uh, involving our youth, I'm interested in it, and I know our board is as well. So, uh, count me in, but I would say the key dates for you to remember to be involved in all these conversations is going to be between October and January timeframe.
Wonderful. That's incredibly helpful and, and certainly would love to partner any opportunity. Like I said, thank you so much for being here and, and thank you for this initial conversation. I do also want to state, I think Mr. Freeze or Dr. Hurst said it, maybe, uh, our trustee said it, but someone said, um, any information you can send to Pinole Television, we would love and, and really love to explore anything from meetings to, uh, engagement strategies, to even just simple, uh, words of affirmation for our community. I think we're really trying to invest more, um, overall in communications for our city. So please do send those things along. Um, I think we would, we would welcome them certainly. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Murphy. Um, and I don't see any further hands, other hands raised. I want to close our session by also thanking, uh, Trustee Smith Folds. In a way, it seems like you're just in our neighborhood, which is why it's like, oh, you know, you know, we see you here, but it seems like we know you already. Uh, but I do appreciate that you, uh, sent an email, reached out to the entire council, uh, so that we could, uh, have this, um, session this afternoon, this presentation this evening. Um, I want to also, uh, publicly acknowledge and extend my appreciation to our local principal, Kibby Kleiman, who is extremely, extremely. Kibby Kleiman, who is extremely, extremely supportive, has been, as long as I know, he has been principal at Pinole Valley High School of all the students who are there. And I also want to put in a bug, a bug in all of your ears about college pipelines. So it was great to hear your opening presentations being about new programs. I'd like to hear via, if not a council presentation, other kinds of communication to us all and the public as well about what pipelines there are for students in the, throughout their academic, academic years, not just as juniors or seniors. And we know this as educators, it begins much, much earlier to have them, I was about to say inculcated, guided, guided about, about the benefits of applying all the lessons learned in an academic setting. So thank you for all your work. We welcome you to a future meeting, perhaps you will join us again. And again, thank you, everyone, for your presentations, your time and your dedication and tremendous work in keeping our students and their parents and their instructors safe. Stay well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council members of Pinole. We really appreciate the opportunity coming. And Councilmember Murphy, we will make sure that we get that information to you. And Councilmember Tabe, we also need to get you the information about the COVID protocol. We didn't get to answer that question, but we will make sure that we get both of those things to you and the entire council. And thank you also for the opportunity to put something on Pinole TV. That'd be great. So we really appreciate it. Dr. Hurst, any closing words? Thank you.
I just appreciate the opportunity to join you this afternoon. I would just say, we're looking for a home. We haven't found a home yet. We actually will be going house hunting this weekend, and I think it's going to be in Pinole, so we'll see what happens. So it's just great to be here, great to see all of you. Thank you so much for the opportunity and thank you so much, trustee Smith Folds and my team as well.
Again, Pinole welcomes you all. Thank you. Until next time. We're going to move on to our next item of the agenda, and that is 13 matters that are on item seven, Consent Calendar. In all matters under Consent Calendar, pardon me, I just clicked a little too hard here and moved, moved the part of the agenda that I wanted to make sure came through. All matters under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial. These items will be enacted by one motion and without discussion. If however, any interested party or council members wish to comment on an item, they may do so before action is taken on the Consent Calendar. Following comments, if a council member wishes to discuss an item, it will be removed from the Consent Calendar and taken up in order after adoption of the Consent Calendar. I will first turn to our deputy city clerk this evening, Mr. De La Rosa. Are there any public comments on any items, any matters on the Consent Calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have an item seven I, and then after that, I do have a couple of comments on changes to the minutes that I'd like to address. We can have Ms. Stone read the public comment on seven I.
I do not have that public comment.
It's, it was a request. Let me get that. I apologize. It's from Mr. You're with me?
Assistant City Manager De La Rosa, I think that comment might have been submitted prior to the written comment deadline and so be included among the written comments, although there might have been one submitted later.
That is correct, City Manager Murray. That comment was submitted prior to the deadline. There have been no public comments received since the deadline, but we do have a live public comment. Madam Mayor, can we take that public comment?
Yes, let's, let's do so, and I'm wondering if that's the same public comment that I received the copy of. Councilmembers, I believe we received something from Mr. John Kaufman. Perhaps that's the one that you're looking for, and if we can have the live public comment, we'll take that. If I can find the other one, I will be glad to read it, as I believe he submitted it for the purpose of having it read. So Ms. Stone, please, the live public comment.
Okay, we will now take a public comment from Rafael Menes.
So I have public comments this time around on items seven F, seven K, and seven L. Seven F first, I noticed that it mentioned that $200,000 were spent in FY 20-21 on the Hazel Street renovation project, but I've bid by that area recently. It's right by my house and it doesn't appear that any work has been done. Is it just that the funds have been real allocated and that just hasn't shown up in the chart yet, or was there work done that simply isn't visible at the surface? With regards to seven K, I looked over the various responses to the proposals, and I was wondering if the city manager could elaborate a bit more on the qualities in Sarell's proposal that they felt made it the most superior, was obviously the lowest cost, but I was wondering what the other factors were they took into account. Finally, with regard to seven L, I would like to state my personal support for the amendment as well as the support of the Pinole Progressive Alliance. It's important for us to acknowledge the Aloney people as the traditional custodians and occupants of this land and to work to strengthen our ties with that community and to continue the traditions that they brought forward. I also have a personal question for myself alone with regards to another item within seven L. Let's see if I can find the specific subsegment, I believe it was in one of the, ah, yes. So Resolution Number 2021-XX subsection two, it says, "The closed session is going to be concluded on or by 7:00 PM. Items will either be held over if it cannot be completed or make a feedback to closed session following all business items in that meeting." And this is on page 408 of the Agenda Packet for reference. So I'm wondering, is that existing council policy and it just hasn't been implemented much, or is it intended to be new council policy? Because I've definitely noticed that there have been closed session items recently that have gone past and sometimes well past 7:00 PM. And while on the one hand, it is good to get those items resolved within the meeting, on the other hand, it does seem to be in conflict with this proposed meeting procedure. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, there are no more public comments? Thank you. Okay, thank you. My understanding then is that there were several public comments that were sent prior to the deadline. Someone clarify for me, just want to make sure that we do read what we're supposed to read publicly and otherwise they will be posted along with everything else related to this meeting. It seems that we will be posting whatever was received for this meeting and they will be available for public viewing.
Madam Mayor, those comments were posted on the city website this afternoon.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for confirming that. Okay, all right then. Turning back to council, well, were there other, I believe, Mr. De La Rosa, you had some other comments related to minutes perhaps? And then as well, City Attorney Casher, I think you might have had something as well you wanted to let us know.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a couple of comments. There were some changes to the minutes. On page three of the minutes of January, of June 1st, it says, wherever Pinole Historical Museum appears, it should be Pinole Historical Society. And the project was presented at the meeting of 6-1 is a project for Pinole Historical Society. Also, on page four of the same minutes, where it states Superintendent Murphy, that appears on the last line of the paragraph of the Consent Calendar, it should read Superintendent Duffy. And on the minutes of June 15th, under 11A1, the fourth line, if we can, we'll delete pocket in the line that reads pocket temporary population shifts. Those are the changes to the minutes, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. City Attorney Casher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Senate Bill 1436 requires that a oral report be provided anytime there is a compensation adjustment to an executive of a public agency. As the council can see on, as item 7J, there is a contract amendment to the city manager's contract. I just wanted to report out for the purposes of SB 1436, the city manager's proposed compensation change would be a 5% increase to his base salary of $225,000. So that concludes my report and compliance with this SB 1436 requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. And for further reading, of course, the document itself is part of the council packet also posted on the city website. There were some questions from Mr. Menes in his public comment. Any responses to any of that? Ms. Carr?
Hi, good evening. I'd just like to answer the question related to Hazel Street. In January 2020, we contracted with a consultant to prepare the preliminary design for the storm drain improvements on Hazel, which includes the plan and profile and the pipe and technical specifications. So while you may not have seen the improvements, it's because we are developing the preliminary design for that project.
Thank you, Ms. Carr, and I'm happy to respond to the question about the proposed professional services agreement with Sarell. That is item seven K. The staff report, I think, provides some of the explanation rationale for why city staff is recommending approval of a contract with Sarell opposed to the other firms. We are fortunate to receive bids from five firms originally with follow-up information from three firms, all very well qualified, but with different types of experience. Sarell in particular has experienced the specific type of scope we're looking for, which is working on communications and engagement plan and branding for an organization as opposed to for a specific issuer campaign, which is a slightly different scope that's done by a bunch of different organizations. Sarell had also apparently spent the most time investigating Pinole and forming some, I thought, very thoughtful ideas that they can, the city can implement right away if we would like. They also have a lot of off-the-shelf proven approaches that I think will be easy to adopt and implement. So the three firms that submitted this follow-up information were all quality firms with good track records. Sarell's particular scope and experience, city staff just felt best met our needs at this time. Happy to answer any other questions or go into that greater detail if anybody would like.
Thank you, Ms. Carr, and thank you, City Manager Murray. Let me turn to council members to find out whether they have any.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. If I may, through the chair, there was one additional question regarding the closed session in the amendment to the council meeting procedures. Just wanted to clarify that the existing council member procedures, where there is a 7:00 PM end time to the closed session, that is consistent with existing, the existing council member procedures. Attachment B to item seven L, it provides all the changes that are being recommended to the council meeting procedures for this particular item. It really is just the land acknowledgement. There are some city council closed sessions that go beyond the 7:00 PM deadline. We do endeavor to complete those by 7:00 o'clock and we often start early in order to do that. The council can, through their will, if they decide to go beyond the 7:00 PM deadline, and we usually do that just for efficiency purposes because it just doesn't make sense to come back to conclude, you know, 10 or 20 minutes of conversation. So that is existing policy that's currently, that's currently being implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Casher. Also, your comments also are a review to us council members. I will emphasize, we endeavor to end our discussions at a certain time and find that often we need a bit more time. So thank you to the public and everyone involved with your patience about how we go, about proceeding in our, in our discussions and deliberation. Okay, so now I will turn to questions from council members. Councilmember Tabe?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item I and have a discussion. I just need clarification from staff.
What is your question, please?
There was several that we had at the last meeting. Maybe, for example, was East Bay Parks part of this discussion in JPA? Since they have lion chair of the square footage that they're talking about for, for this JPA? How does this affect Measure X? How does this affect Station 74? I mean, I have some questions surrounding item I that I'd like the city manager in chief to kind of give us an idea of as to what prompted this resolution and this being on Consent Calendar.
Thank you. So we'll set I aside for now. Any questions from any other council members? Councilmember Murphy?
No questions, but I did want to just take a moment to thank City Manager Murray for the work you've done to really push our strategic plan outlines out. I mean, I think it's a big deal for folks watching, particularly folks who have, you know, come to this council and said, like, you know, our communication is a little off, where we can do more, like, this is actually a huge step that we're taking tonight if we do approve these items. But I did want to just commend again, City Manager Murray, on, on just really taking that strategic plan, leading it, putting us in the right position really to be here. I mean, I think it's really, it's incredibly commendable. And I also, of course, want to thank our city attorney, Eric Casher, for both, just your tremendous work around the indigenous land acknowledgement and, and working both with me, but also leading in so many ways by, with the work you've done with other cities around this issue. So it's just, I feel like there are, you know, sometimes we have these consent calendar items and they're actually far more important than just like small titles on a, under a consent calendar agenda. So I just wanted to say thank you because I, I'm really excited about what we have going and I'm looking forward to the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Murphy. So may I have a motion to approve items A through M? Except for, except for I as an igloo? Moved by Councilmember Tabe. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Murphy. Any objections? Motion carries. Thank you. Now let's turn to I, which is, again, I just clicked and my cursor went a little too fast, so pardon. I is the resolution to participate in discussions regarding an East Bay wildfire prevention and vegetation management joint powers agency. City manager, you heard some questions from Councilmember Tabe. Can you please?
Yeah, happy to respond along with Chief Waincupp. So reminder, the reason that this appears on a city council agenda is that the city council had previously requested as a future agenda item, a presentation by the organization, the formation committee of this prospective East Bay wildfire JPA. And representative of that formation committee, John Kaufman, made a presentation. At the conclusion of that item, the city council requested as a follow-up future council agenda item, consideration of a resolution to commit the city to engage in dialogue about the formation of this JPA. And so this item on tonight's agenda is just the follow-up to that council direction. The resolution that is being proposed is based on the template that that formation committee has provided. And so that was referenced during the presentation by Mr. Kaufman, said, "We're coming up with, where we have developed a model resolution that we're asking cities to adopt to express their commitment to engaging in the dialogue." So we're simply bringing back this item as, in response to that request by the council. in response to that request by the council. I'll let Chief Weincoop address the issue of East Bay Regional Parks District. I don't think there's any, and I'll take a stab at the Measure X, I don't think there's any natural or direct relationship between this resolution, which is, you know, very limited in scope. It just commits us to participate in the dialogue. It doesn't commit us to join the JPA, nothing like that. I don't think there's any natural relationship or conflict between that and Measure X. This JPA would be served both Contra Costa and Alameda counties. The funding source of this JPA has not been identified. A number of different options were discussed by Mr. Kaufman when he made this presentation a few council meetings ago. So I think that the scope of the JPA and the funding sources are yet to be determined. I don't think, I recall having heard any reference whatsoever to the use of Measure X funds to support the activities of this JPA. That's not to say that some Measure X funds might not ultimately be devoted to wildfire prevention activities. I don't know whether they might flow to the JPA. Chief Weincoop, if you have something to add, please?
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the question. Yes, so yeah, there's no implications to Measure X whatsoever. There are some wildfire mitigation proposals in the, in the county chief's proposal for Measure X funds that have to do with wildfire mitigation, but they have nothing to do with this JPA. And I think it's important to, 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 to point out, when I say this JPA, there is no JPA. The JPA does not exist. It is, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a formation committee that's proposing a JPA. And as far as the, the resolution, it's really up to council whether they want to engage in the resolution. Either way, whether there's, whether there's a resolution approved or not approved, I'm happy to be a representative of the, of the city if discussions regarding this JPA occur. You know, I don't know that it's necessary that, that there is a resolution. The resolution is the formation committee's suggestion to council. So either way, if council would like me to be a representative of the city in participating in any of these discussions, I'm happy to do so, resolution or not. But, but I think it's important to, to point out that there is no joint power, there is no JPA that exists right now. It is, it's a commitment to, to avail staff into discussions about the formation of a JPA. I think that's an important distinction.
And if I may very briefly just add, I mean, we would engage in dialogue through the natural course of things anyways, because if any other agency or regional partner were to approach the city of Panol and offer, you know, the opportunity to discuss some sort of partnership that might improve our ability to fight wild wildfires, of course, we'd say, yes, we're happy to hear more. Let's talk. So I don't.
I mean, that's, that's kind of my point is that, do we need a resolution for this? Or, I mean, I think you guys would have already started that engagement, did the fact-finding, kind of vetted things out, and then brought something to us. I'm just trying to figure out, are we just passing this resolution to, to say, hey, we're interested? I, I mean, is that the, the point of this?
Yeah, it's, it's an ask by the formation committee to, for the city to make a policy statement of commitment to at least engaging in dialogue. But it's not really very binding in other respects. And I don't think, as Chief Weincoop and I have mentioned, it will probably result in any different level of engagement or effort by city staff than we would otherwise normally take in the, in the vetting process of a potential opportunity.
I see. Okay.
And to your question, Councilmember Tave, as to whether East Bay Parks has been, they have been extended that invitation the same as we have. I don't know their, I don't know their temperature on whether they want to engage in discussions or not. But the, the, the extension to engage in discussions has been offered to all, all fire-related stakeholders.
Thank you. Chief Weincoop and City Manager, you have accurately described what has been my understanding as well, as the formation committee representatives spoke about this interest in forming a JPA, but also wanting very much to have everyone who possibly, would possibly be interested or have a stake in however this forms and whatever it becomes. They spoke to the West Contra Costa Mayors and Supervisors Association a few months ago, and they are essentially making, making the rounds of offering invitations to all who would be interested in this. Councilmember Murphy?
Sure. I just wanted to actually make a motion to, at some point, maybe the next meeting, like, I think it was a little vague, and I appreciate the chief for tapping in there, because I was confused as to who the actual representative was speaking for Panol in this case. I'd love to just make sure we formalize a process, just like what we do with other committees, that, and again, this is my motion, is to actually come back and appoint maybe a council member. And obviously, I think it's more so for the city manager to decide, but who would be that city staff representative. Obviously, Chief Weincoop, you just mentioned you'd be that person. I would like to see that formalized. Just so that, again, because it is the discussion around a joint powers agency, having some council member as a part of those conversations is going to be really critical in the long range, considering the joint powers agency is, is more so something that generally a council or the public will have to approve in the long run. So I just wanted to make that motion, and I honestly would like to see that in the resolution, like defined, but I'm happy to, again, circle back at another council meeting and make an official, you know, whoever's interested in the council and being appointed, I think would be very helpful for the broad conversation around whether or not this joint powers agency is going to be something or not.
Thank you for those comments. For the time being, what's being discussed is this matter, whether we are going to approve the resolution as it stands or not.
Oh, I was making a, I was making a motion to amend the resolution.
City Attorney Casher, immediate guidance on procedure here? We have a matter on consent calendar as it is?
Yes. So the item before the council is the approval of the resolution. There can be a friendly amendment to the resolution, but what I think is being proposed is, is maybe appointment of council members to serve as, on maybe some sort of a subcommittee. And so that is a little bit of a, there might need to be some discussion of that. And I don't know, it might make more sense to have that as a separate item, maybe at a subsequent meeting where the council can, can discuss the scope of that subcommittee, who would be the members, and, and we could kind of appoint members in a different, in a different form. I think that's a little bit different than what's currently been agendized for this, this item.
Hard to see.
Thank you. So Councilmember Murphy, hold on to that notion. Hold on to that, Councilmember Murphy. We can't both speak at the same time. Hold on to your idea, Councilmember Murphy?
That wasn't my idea. You're not listening.
Pardon me. Pardon me.
Just to clarify.
Councilmember Murphy, pardon me.
Mayor.
Hold on to, we can't both speak at the same time. Please respect the process here. Hold on to this notion of wanting to have a process about a committee or representatives on this JPA, or whatever your idea will be. Later in the meeting, you can propose to have time set aside for that kind of discussion. If I am misinterpreting what you said, you can clarify it for us then. Thank you. Councilmember Toms?
I was just gonna make a motion that we approve this consent item, and then later on for future agenda items, I'd like to have, have it agendized if we need to have a council representative identified.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tave?
I, I was just gonna second Councilmember Murphy's motion.
Okay, again, I need, I need some guidance here. City Attorney Casher, please.
Yeah, so as a point of clarification, the resolution does provide, now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of Panol does hereby agree to make staff and/or officials available to participate in negotiations and meetings. So I think the resolution already does anticipate and contemplate some level of participation by members of the city council. So hopefully that kind of addresses that issue. I do think that if there's going to be a, a more robust discussion of who will be appointed and the scope of that, I do think that that would be more appropriate for a future meeting. But I think the resolution does contemplate the participation of officials and council members.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Murphy, you've got your hand up?
Sure. So I think what I was mentioning, thank you for that, and thank you. Again, I was noting specifically that therefore be it resolved clause that says make staff and officials available. My interpretation from the presenter who came a couple of weeks back was that there is a steering committee of representatives from each city working to develop what will be a power, a joint powers agency. I'm not suggesting that we create a subcommittee out of our group as city of Panol. What I'm suggesting is that just like any other body in which we represent as council members, and, and the potential of a joint powers agency is going to certainly be a public body if, if it were to be formed, there would need to be someone on council. In addition to a staff member, I think it would be valuable for those two folks to be, again, outlined. Right now, it just says generally the council, and it also says staff. What that says to me, or how I hear that, is that I can be a part of it, the mayor can be a part of it, councilmember Tave, Toms, and Salimi can also be a part of it. And what would happen in that situation is we all may have different goals and guidelines and parameters. And so what I'm, again, what I'm suggesting, and Mayor, so that you understand, that was not my idea. And so my idea is to make sure that if we're passing a resolution that's very broad and says that officials and council members can be a part of it, we actually identify in the resolution who those people are, will be, so that it doesn't create chaos in terms of who's representing Panol and who's not. So that's my suggestion. I'm happy to bring that up as a future council agenda item. But again, in terms of this resolution, I didn't know this was coming to our, obviously, until the agenda was announced. I didn't, I thought we were just going through with discussions, and I kind of thought the city manager was leading on that. This now is coming as a resolution, unbeknownst to me. But now that it's here, I would like to see it more specified in terms of who is actually those representatives. And I'd like to circle back to those representatives to, to understand the status of what's happening.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, so back to the matter as it is. Councilmember Toms, you've, your hand up?
Yeah, I just put my hand up. I'm wondering if the now therefore be it resolved, where it says, and, it says make staff and/or officials available. If it would resolve part of your concern, Councilmember Murphy, if the slash or was deleted. So it would make staff and an official available to participate. If that resolves part of it, and then we, we decided a future meeting who that official would be. So I'll amend my motion to approve seven I with just striking the slash or in the now therefore be it resolved.
I'll second that. Any objections? Okay.
We not doing roll call vote?
Oh, with our, with our city clerk absent, I understand that it's simply if I have anyone objecting, you can do so, and then we can record the vote as, as in that manner. City Attorney Casher, is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you. Any objections to the motion? Just present it. Okay, I think we've had discussion about it as up to now. So motion carries. Thank you. We are approving seven I with that amendment, with that modification in the language. Thank you very much. There are no public hearings. We go on to old business, and that is item 9A to rescind, and reconsider the resolution 2021 slash 35 hyphen 35 condemning Donald Trump and the action before us is to consider adoption of resolution per staff recommendation. City Manager Murray, staff report?
Yes, so city clerk Yopa and I collaborated to draft a resolution at council's direction condemning Donald Trump. And that resolution was heard by the city council at a previous city council meeting. Subsequent to that, the city council approved a future agenda item to reconsider, rescind and reconsider that resolution that had already been adopted. So that is the purpose of the item this evening. It's to, for the city council to consider rescinding its prior action and consider again approving or adopting the resolution condemning Donald Trump. And I understand that there are certain procedural requirements that I'll ask City Attorney Casher to address regarding rescinding a previously approved resolution.
Thank you, City Manager Murray. The only thing I'll add from a procedural standpoint is that a two-thirds vote of the city council is required to rescind a previously adopted resolution. So that would be a four, four members of the city council approving that rescission of the prior resolution. And then the, the vote on the new resolution would just take a majority vote. So that's the only kind of procedural requirements there.
Thank you. Okay, I will move that we rescind the prior resolution and reconsider the one that's presented before us. I hope I have made a motion that makes sense. May I have a second?
Second?
Discussion. Councilmember Toms?
Uh, thank you. I, I previously abstained from voting on this resolution, because I think that the city council does not really have the purview. This is not within the council's purview. It's not within staff's tasks to be putting partisan judgmental resolutions together. While I personally am disgusted by the actions of the former president leading up to and even after January 6th, as a council member, a council member, I don't think that it's our place. You'll find that you don't have any school boards, you don't have any boards of, the board of supervisors, any other cities that have adopted that because they know what their purview is, and this isn't it. So that's my purpose for abstaining from this the first time, and I will also abstain from the vote this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, we do have public comments.
Thank you. Please, thank you for reminding me of that, and we will hear the public comments. Okay, we will hear from Rafael Menace.
So I'd like to start my comments here by thanking Mayor Potem Salimi and Councilmember Toms for being willing to talk with me about this item separately and independently, because I wanted to understand their perspectives on it. I'd like to respond, if I can, to Councilmember Tom's assertion that this resolution is outside of the city council's purview. On two points I disagree. The first is whether or not the city council simply has the power to make a resolution condemning someone or some particular thing. And I think that the answer to that is inherently yes, because the council unquestionably has the power to praise and frequently does so. There are numerous proclamations every year praising particular groups, praising individuals for various causes and reasons. And the nature of the power of praise is that it also includes the power to blame who you choose not to praise, who you choose to rebuke or condemn. And secondarily, with regards to the particular topic matter, I think that the whereas is in the resolution logically lead to the points in the conclusion. If we accept a particular, the final whereas, a peaceful transition of power is an essential part of American democracy. Former President Trump intentionally acted to disrupt the peaceful transition of power, then President Trump, if we're accepting those whereas is as factual, which I believe is reasonable to do, attacked the Constitution, our system of government, that the council members individually and collectively are sworn to uphold. And therefore, I believe that it falls within the council's collective purview to. And therefore, I believe that it falls within the council's collective purview to respond to attempts to undermine our system of government by saying that this is unacceptable and to support our system of government, just because the font of legitimacy that grants the council the ability to do anything at all flows from the Constitution and from the consent of the people. And so when people take actions to undermine those sources of authority, I think it's entirely reasonable for the council to push back and to say this isn't acceptable. We condemn it, we rebuke it. Thank you.
We also have public comments from Debbie.
Good evening again. I just wanted to say, I don't see if my staff time would be used for a resolution on Trump. He's been out of office for almost nine months, and quite frankly, this has to do with a national political agenda that is old news. You're wasting staff time and taxpayer money by revisiting this. I'd rather hear how you're working with our assembly members and state congress to address the drought conditions, and how have the funds from the 2014 Proposition One water bond been spent, and how has that taken a step towards securing more water for our state? I'd rather hear how you're working with our assembly members and state congress to address the wildland fires, and how are they replacing the firefighting volunteers that had come from the prisons? What steps are they taking in deforestation and management of the forest? I'd rather hear how new businesses are being attracted to our town. After all, at least two councilmen ran on that platform in 2018. I'd rather hear how the disaster preparedness plan is developing. And I could go on and on, but I think you get my point. You were elected to do the business of the city and not waste time, yes, waste time on national politics, especially when it is nothing but old news. You are stewards of the city. You need to spend our money and our staff time doing the business of Pinole and let others in Congress and the Senate take care of the national politics. I'm, I was just very sorry to see this come back, and particularly when there are so many other important issues out there. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, there are no more public comments.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment period on this item. Council member Tav?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, the speakers had mentioned a lot of issues that are going on, but for me, this one, I, I could appreciate it coming back, but I just want to urge my colleagues, you know, we, we said that we would bear true faith, you know, to uphold the Constitution. That's what was in our oath. And I would just urge my colleagues to reconsider supporting this resolution, only because in, in my mind, our Capitol was attacked, and we had a president at the time who was complacent, who said nothing. That's what we're condemning. This was an attack on our country. It's, it's plain and simple. We have Republicans and Democrats in the city of Pinole. We have Republicans and Democrats that are married to each other and have families. And they all, the people that I've spoken with, know that this was wrong. This has never been done before in the history of this country. And as a leader, the expectation, at any level, is to lead. It's in the word leadership. And in my opinion, this, this resolution was a way for us to bring our community together, to let them know that as a council, we don't agree with what happened, we're condemning it, and it was wrong. And I just want to urge my colleagues to please reconsider supporting the resolution that we have here. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, council member Tav. Evidently, bringing this back, or even talking about the matter, did not bring any unity to the city, but it's okay, because what we know then is, well, people have various opinions, and that's what makes our community what it is. On the surface, I thought we wouldn't have to take as much time as we have. It was an easy enough decision for me to condemn actions regardless of the party, national party that this Trump represents. It so happens to belongs to one. And I'm not seeing this as a partisan issue, I'm seeing it as a condemnation of behavior that is just unacceptable at any level. And particularly if a, a lot of the direction that ends up filtering down to cities, it goes both ways, but a lot of the direction, a lot of the trending with regard to governance does come from federal down to the city. It would be wonderful if we had an engaged public and civic participation such that we could do more from the ground up on a number of different issues. And that, yes, we spend the time, and I want us to spend the time, to talk about the local matters. We have to. It just so happens that we are in a time in history where this other matter occurred. And being in the role that I am, representing even local government, I can't stand for all of the awful destruction on, on different levels, not just the physical destruction of our Capitol, but what allowing that represents. To me, that's chaos. To me, it's something that does not represent anything positive about what government should be and/or what citizens ought to be. Therefore, I will stand in my vote in support of condemning as the resolution reads. Any other comments? Okay. So the motion is to rescind the resolution and reconsider the one that is currently before us, consider adopting it as, as it reads. May I have?
So, Madam Mayor, through the chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
I think if we can have two, two motions, the first motion, as I understand, you mentioned, would be to rescind the prior resolution, and then we'll take a second vote on the approval of the new resolution. So if we could have a motion to, the first motion is to rescind the prior motion.
Thank you. Glad to do that. I move to rescind the prior motion, and may I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Salimi. We've had some discussion, and any objections to rescinding the prior motion?
I'm going to abstain from that.
Okay, one abstention by council member Tom's.
I'm going to object to rescinding the original resolution.
And one objection. Um, how is that recorded? Is that recorded as a no vote?
Yes, it will be.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. And the second part of this matter of business is about adopting the resolution to condemn Donald Trump as it reads in our packet. May I have a second?
So if I may, just a point of clarification, I'll ask of city attorney Casher if we have three I's to rescind, one abstention, and one no. Does the motion to rescind pass or fail?
Yeah, so it, it with, with only three votes in favor, the motion to rescind would not pass because we need four votes, the two-thirds majority of the council. So if the motion does, the motion to rescind appears to have not passed, so the prior motion, I'm sorry, I keep saying motion, it's resolution. The prior resolution is still in effect, and so it hasn't, the council has not moved to rescind it, so that will remain in effect.
Madam Mayor, I'll change my vote to yes on rescinding. So you'd have four to rescind it?
That would be sufficient.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So that motion carries, and now we go on to the second, now we do have a second part of this business, and that is to adopt the resolution that's before us. And may I have a second?
I second it.
Mayor Protem Salimi, was that you a second?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Any objections?
I'm going to abstain from this part of the motion.
One abstention, any objections? Okay, and so that, then we have four council members that have accepted, adopted the resolution as it reads in our packet this evening, and the motion carries. Thank you for your guidance, city attorney Casher. Okay, we go on to the next agenda item, and that's to hear a report on the effectiveness of current code, the current code enforcement program. And Mr. Loughlin, your report, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we'd like to share with you just an overview of the code enforcement program, which is, was previously under the Development Services Department, and now will be under Community Development. So we'll give you a brief history of, of what's been happening. So with that, next slide, please. So in the presentation, I'll just go over the history of code enforcement in Pinole since 2008, some of the code enforcement roles and procedures, some of the fines, some case statistics, highlighted violations. And to help me with that, we have with us Justine Seedy, who is our code enforcement officer, who will be sharing that with us. And then we'll just conclude with any questions you might have. So the first, next slide, please. The history of code enforcement in Pinole is prior to 2008, code enforcement was a full-time permanent position within the city. In 2008, the position was suspended due to the recession. In 2008, after, and between 2008 and 2010, code enforcement became a contract position and was first housed under the police department with two contracted full-time code enforcement officers. In 2011, it was moved to Community Development, and that was just with one full-time contracted code enforcement officer. And then in 2020, a full-time permanent code enforcement officer position was founded under Development Services. And, and then in 2020 as well, code enforcement became responsible for weed abatement procedures in the city as a part of their responsibilities. Next slide, please. So just, just so that everyone's clear on the role of the code enforcement officer, they inspect residential and commercial properties for maintenance violations and health and safety violations throughout the city. They educate the public on city ordinances and state laws. They work closely with police, fire, and I should also say, Planning Department as well. And they assist the Pinole Fire Department with all fire season and weed abatement procedures to ensure compliance and reduce fire danger. Next slide, please. We thought it was important to share this information with you on code enforcement procedures, because one of the, one of the things that happens in code enforcement is citizens will, you know, provide a complaint, and they'll expect to see something happen right away. What's, what we have to do in code enforcement is we have to provide due process. And the reason for that is that if the case goes unresolved and the city needs to keep stepping up enforcement, we, we have to demonstrate that we provided every opportunity for compliance so that a defensible case can be developed regarding the matter. So the first item that happens is a courtesy notice is given, and it's a two-week period for the first notice. And then there's a second notice that's provided, that provides the property owners of appeal rights, citations, and city abatement procedures. Next, the citations can be given, and it's a hundred dollars per violation, two hundred dollars for the next violation, and five hundred dollars for, per violation after that. And then each citation allows for 30 days to comply, and the fourth and continuing citations are issued daily for five hundred dollars per violation. Finally, an abatement warrant can be given, which allows the city employees and contractors into the property to abate violations. And the ultimate goal is voluntary compliance. Next slide, please. So citations and fines, and this is, this is, this is a little difficult slide. It's, you know, very difficult to go back in the records and really understand what might have been happening between 2008 and 2010. But the annual, annual total fines at that time was $537 in 2011 through 2019. The average annual fines were approximately $5,800. And then finally, between 2020 and 21, we have a very large number, and that's attributable to several, several cases which went, if you think, think back to the previous slide, several violations that went into daily, daily fines at $500, and that adds up pretty quickly. So next slide, please. Okay, this is just a chart which just shows, gives you an idea of some of the caseload. So the, the blue that you see is the annual number of cases, and then the total within the time period. So we have 584 cases between 2008 and 2010 on, on an annual basis, about 203 between 2011 and 2019, and then about 335 cases per year that are opened under our current, by our current code enforcement officer. Next slide, please. Closed cases tracked pretty closely with, you know, with the open cases. Again, the, the green number is the annual number of cases that have been closed. You know, 575 between 2008 and 2010, 206 between 2011 and 2019, and then about 332 cases under the city hall permanent employee. Next slide, please. Finally, the number of annual inspections. And you can see, see those numbers, and currently, our current code enforcement officer conducts about 617 inspections per year. Next slide, please. And this, and I'd like to turn it over at this point to Justine Seedy, who will just present to you a, a couple of cases from 2021 that really demonstrate the effectiveness of the code enforcement program. So Justine, take it away.
Hello, can everybody hear me okay? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yes. All right. So thank you for having me. A couple highlighted cases, one of which went through all the procedures for code enforcement, unfortunately, and we had to obtain an abatement warrant. The violations, at first off, started with a courtesy notice. They were given their due process, and then after that, a notice of violation. There were multiple contacts made with the property owner in person, on the phone, and they were provided with multiple extensions in between the, the notices to comply. They chose not to. They ultimately ended up receiving 13 citations for the violations, and then we had to obtain an abatement warrant to abate the property. They received a certified letter advising that an abatement warrant was going to be served on the property, and they ended up cleaning it up within 24 hours of receiving that notice. So we did not actually have to go on there and remove the violations ourselves, which is great because they did ultimately voluntarily comply. And then if you want to go to the next slide, please. So these are some of the violations of what probably looked like before. Large amount of tree debris, next slide, please. Spilling it over onto the sidewalk in public right of way, next slide. Outdoor storage accumulated in public view, next slide. And then encroachment on the sidewalk in the street as well. Next slide. So here are some after photos of when they cleaned up the property. This is where that large pile of wood was. Next slide. That's where the outdoor storage was. Next slide. And that's where all the items in the street were located. Next slide, please. So this property had a large amount of overgrown vegetation on the property for many years. I was informed that for the last 10-plus years, city staff had tried to get ahold of the property owners to abate the, the violations of the overgrown vegetation and volunteer. property owners to abate the, the violations of the overgrown vegetation and volunteer, and comply with weed abatement standards. When I started here as a contract employee, I also tried multiple times to contact the property owner with several notices, internet searches for the property owners, and I was not able to ever locate them, and all the notices were returned to sender. They do live out of the country. Next slide. So these are some of the before photos of when the violations existed. Next slide. It's very thick and dense. If there were a fire there, it would be very difficult for crews to get through all that. Next slide, please. And then next slide. So here's after. The crew came out, the, the property owners were ultimately contacted because the property was listed for sale, and I contacted the real estate agent listed on the for-sale side and located on the property, and she was able to reach out to the property owners and, and advise them of the weed abatement standards through the city. And it took a little bit of time, but they were ultimately complied, and that's what we want here. So next slide, please. It was all cut back for a 30-foot defensible space around the property. Next slide. All the weeds have been trimmed, and the, the branches of the trees were cut up high enough for fire crews to access underneath the trees if needed. Next slide. So they complied, which was great. No citations issued to them, simply because all of the, the notices ended up getting returned, and we were unable to contact them throughout all those years. Next slide, please. So conclusions for contract versus in-house staff. Based on the number, the numbers provided in in-house code enforcement has been more effective and productive. During the spring and summer months, resources are stretched thin with weed abatement and regular code enforcement duties. Having additional contract resources in the spring and summer would be helpful to address complaints in a more timely manner. Next slide. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation, and I want to say, welcome again. I recall that the last time I saw you was when you were introduced to the council as, I suppose, a full-time code enforcement officer for us. So that's been a couple of years. Your work is not easy, and the demands that you have on you via us, council members, because we hear the demands and requests from the public, that we do not like code violations. We do not like seeing the overgrown weeds. We do not like to see all the litter, et cetera, et cetera. And what we can do then is forward that request to, to staff, and you get to do what you need to do in order to clear all of that. I especially appreciate understanding the due process, the amount of time that it takes between becoming aware of a complaint and eventual, is the word "abatement," eventual taking care of, of the problem. It is quite a while, but I suppose that is a standard amount of time. Let us know if that is the case. And that is one question that I would have, and then I will ask council members as well for their questions, and then turn to our deputy city clerk to find, to find out if there are any public comments. So council members, I see your hands up, and I think I first turn to Chief Waincoop, because I think you probably work in tandem with Ms. Seedy, Seedy, to make our city better.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor, and I just, I just wanted to take this opportunity to express our appreciation to, to Justine and to, you know, for her code enforcement work and how much of a help it is to our fire prevention efforts, and what a great job she's been doing, and we appreciate it here at the Fire Department.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just wanted to also extend my thanks to you, Officer Justine. Thank you so much for your work. We do hear a lot of comments from the public around code enforcement, and certainly within the last several years, I think it's something where a lot of folks are like, where is our code enforcement? So now they know you, and if they didn't know before, now they do, and I hope they reach out to you more often. I'm sorry to make your job harder, but I know you probably really enjoy code enforcement, so that's probably not bad for you. I did want to, I did want to ask a question, and I think Chief Waincoop kind of touched on it, but I did want to know, what is the work that the Fire Department and the collaboration between Code Enforcement Department or Police Department, what does that look like? And you kind of talked about the examples, but I was just wondering, how does that kind of look in the day-to-day practice?
So typically, when I enforce weed abatement standards, it's typically within the residential commercial areas. The Fire Department addresses all the open space throughout the city, so the larger lots owned by the city typically in the area of Galbreth and Pinole Valley Road, those larger city-owned areas. We do communicate with each other to discuss complaints that come in. Sometimes they go through the Fire Department, and LaTicia forwards them to me. Sometimes I'll get complaints for the open space areas, and I forward those back to the Police Department to address, or sorry, Fire Department to address. And when I'm uncertain about certain things, I do contact either the Fire Inspector or Matt, who's a firefighter in charge of the city's weed abatement and the open space, and we collaborate together to discuss the best way to resolve the violations with the property owners as well.
Thank you. And so just in terms of the code enforcement, I'm wondering, you talked a lot about like what happens up until the point where folks have to basically either get fined or get back in code. Is there a process, a process that you're involved in afterward regarding, I don't know, some, maybe the term is like ressort of justice, or something to the effect of like keeping in contact with people who have kind of made maybe mistakes, right? Some folks make mistakes, they don't really know what they're doing, and some folks kind of are trying to, I mean, especially in the last two years, trying to get out of this kind of hole of the pandemic, and maybe losing their job, and not, you know, maybe being depressed and having their weeds grown, overgrown. I'm wondering what type of processes we have in our, in our town to kind of, you know, support the, those mistake makers, if you will, right? Folks who, who, you know, you deal with every day.
Right. So the, the notices that we send out at first, they're just, the first one is a courtesy notice, just letting them know that they do have a violation. If they're present at the time that I do my inspection, I do make contact with them, and sometimes I do give them verbal warnings instead of the notices. I tried to treat everybody equally with the notices. Sometimes I'll give them a verbal warning on top of the courtesy notice. And like the presentation said, everybody's given their due process, their 14 business days to comply with both notices. If there's some sort of issue where they can't comply in time, I always inform them to contact me if they need an extension. I have no problem providing extensions as long as it's not a health and safety issue. If it's overgrown weeds that, you know, maybe are three to four feet tall, then it's no problem providing a reasonable amount of an extension. Typically, it's an additional 14 days, and then after that, it's followed by the notice or additional contact from me to the property owners for some type of verbal update as to when they'll be able to comply. There are some properties here which I call repeat offenders that are known to, to have the violations multiple times after multiple cases have been opened on the properties. The way that the city code reads is if, if a property's had a violation, say for outdoor storage, for example, and they've received two citations, and I end up going back out there and they've complied, then I close the case. If I drive by the property again because I'm in the area, or if we get a complaint within a year timeframe, calendar year timeframe, and I see that they have the same exact violations on the property, the code allows me to go straight to citation instead of going through the, the notice process all over again. Because we're in these trying times right now, instead of going straight to citation, I go to the notice of violation, or sorry, the notice in order to abate. So they are given another notice, but instead of two, they're given the one. And then after that, it goes to citations. So I try to work with people. Our goal isn't to fine people and collect money, our goal is voluntary compliance.
Thank you. Thanks for your work. Last question. Are you, are you one of the officers that sometimes goes on live with Milo?
I am not, no.
Okay. I was like, I just wasn't sure. But thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
If I, if I may, Mayor Martinez, I'd like to follow up on a point that Councilmember Murphy raised, and that is, the code enforcement function is actually quite complicated, and it's really challenging, I think, to strike the right balance. And as Michael and Justine mentioned, this, what the city wants is for people to voluntarily meet the code requirements. We don't want to be involved in enforcement, and we have an education-first approach, which is there are often times that people are unaware of what the code requirements are. And again, we're not trying to ding people. What we want them to do is meet the standards and maintain the safety and beauty of our community. But, you know, there are people who are willfully and knowingly non-compliant with the code, and then there are people who are, you know, unaware of what the code requirements are. And it's often the case, particularly during challenging financial times, that there are people who simply don't have the wherewithal and means to immediately meet code standards. And so I've been super impressed in my time here and feel really grateful for the excellent code enforcement staff and program we have, because I feel like in every instance where I've dug into the details of a code enforcement case, I feel like we have taken just the right tenor in addressing it and understanding the challenges and limits, the needs of the community and the challenges and limitations of the community members. And so I just want to, I want to emphasize that it's actually really challenging, and it's really quite community-specific, how where the right balance is between the community needs and the challenges, particularly some of our less-resourced community members. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Councilmember Toms?
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to start out by telling you that I received a comment, a phone call from a neighbor of, on Pinion after that vegetation abatement was done, and got all kinds of raves. This neighbor was extremely thrilled, so I'm going to pass along her thanks to you.
Thank you.
Sure. So I have, I get a lot of, you know, code enforcement complaints. One of them has to do with people that build fences aligned right behind the sidewalk within the public utility easement. So they might be enclosing, you know, traffic signs or utility boxes and so on. And I'm wondering if there's some way we can educate the public about where the proper place to place a fence would be, you know? Is it, is it two feet in back of sidewalk, or how do you tell where, you know, your, your property starts where you can actually install a fence? So I'm wondering if we can do, you know, some kind of education on that, because I can see that, you know, if, if Public Works, say, needs to go in and switch out a stop sign, and somebody has it enclosed behind their fence, you know, it, it becomes an issue. So I wanted to throw that out there, that, you know, that's a consistent complaint that I do receive, and I think education would be the best thing, rather than having everybody, you know, pull up their fences and move them back two feet. But I'd like to not see new fences get installed in that area. And then the other thing is, I've had a resident complain about a neighbor who works on cars. And, you know, between working on the cars in their own, you know, residence garage, they're parking cars, you know, on the street where other, you know, residents cannot access them. So I'm wondering, what is, what would you suggest is the best way, aside from taking photographs, that the residents can help you to get that situation under control?
Unfortunately, when it comes to street parking, that's going to be the responsibility of the Police Department. The street is considered public parking, and people are allowed to park in areas that aren't marked specifically for fire lanes or handicap zones or anything. The best thing they could do is report any inoperable vehicles or abandoned vehicles left on the street, and then the Police Department does go out and tag them, and they have their process on how they tag and remove. As for the, the vehicles being repaired, in the, in the, on the property themselves, they do have 72 hours to do the, the minor repairs, base maintenance of the vehicles. They can't do any major repairs of removing any engines or anything like that. That would all have to be done behind their closed garage door. And then the, the education on the fences, I think that's a great idea. There are a lot of people that don't understand the, the utility easements on their properties. And I think getting education out there to inform them that if they are going to put their fence up against the sidewalk, then whoever's in charge of the easement isn't responsible for having to damage or remove the fence that gets constructed along that easement. That's something we'll discuss here on ways to educate the public. I think that's a great one, because I have had a couple complaints about that as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Salimi?
Thank you for your work. My, I have two questions. Can you please tell us if we are having a proactive code enforcement or reactive code enforcement, and tell us what the difference is?
So I do both. We do get complaints from the public to address specific situations that I don't see, but I am out every day, and I do patrol the, the city for violations as well. And when I see them, I, I go through the normal code enforcement procedures with the notices and everything. But we, we do both proactive and reactive, yes.
Thank you. And my last question would be, I, I do receive emails, especially on the weekends, because, you know, as you may be aware, Pinole is a community, it's a bedroom community where a lot of people actually used to commute and come back to work, home on the weekends. And what is being done to enforce code enforcement during the weekend, specifically this past weekend? We had added couch on the, on the corner of Tenant Avenue and, and Pear Street. And so who is doing code enforcement during the weekend?
There is no code enforcement staff on the weekends at this time. If there's emergency after-hours or on the weekends, typically it's, it's building violations or health and safety violations that are emergencies, and we contract with Forleaf right now with building inspectors, and they are called out for emergency cases after-hours. But on the weekends, if a complaint comes in for illegally dumped items or overgrown vegetation, typical code enforcement cases, they pen until the following business day.
Thank you. That concludes my question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Salimi. Councilmember Tate?
Yeah, thank you for all the work that you're doing. I know that, you know, code enforcement is difficult, like the city manager said, and I mean, thank you for doing the job and, and, you know, approaching it with the, with the sense of grace while, while doing it. So we appreciate that. The question I had was more of a, if, you know, Pinole, a lot of houses are rented out. How is that handled if, if a rented home is not up-kept or, you know, and you're serving somebody that, that is renting and, you know, doesn't really have an obligation to mow the lawn or anything like that? How are those situations handled, if at all?
So the city has a rental inspection program. All rental properties are required to be listed and licensed. The property owners are required to obtain licenses for their rentals. Once the application is received, rental inspections are scheduled with the building inspector, and the building inspector then goes out and inspects the property for health and safety concerns, any overgrown vegetation, trash, anything, any violations that he would see on the property. At times, I do go out with him as well, so I could also address code enforcement issues, and then he could address the, the building safety issues. And every three years, license, the licenses need to be renewed, so inspections are required to get done every three years for rentals. Unfortunately, with COVID, everything got put on the back burner, so I know the building inspector is behind on the, the rental inspections, but he has been scheduling them, and we have been going out to them to address the issues. The owners of the property are ultimately required for any violations that are on the property. whether it be overgrown weeds or any type of electrical or plumbing issues. They are provided a correction list from the building inspector on everything that needs to be addressed. He provides them a certain amount of time to get the issues addressed and then he goes back out to re-inspect. I know there's, most of them have complied with his corrections, correction lists. There's been a couple that have had minor issues that are holding them up, but ultimately they do end up complying. And if the, the property owner has some type of agreement with the tenant to maintain the upkeep of the yard and they don't, again, it's ultimately the property owner's responsibility because it's their property. So if they have to go on there and cut the overgrown weeds in the front yard, that's what they're going to have to do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Justine, if I may, that prompted a related follow-up question in my mind, which is, how do we ensure, so in most of these, I mean, in these cases, the property owners are ultimately responsible. So if there's a complaint or through proactive patrolling, you notice a potential code enforcement violation, how do we ensure that the notification gets to the, you know, the property owner as opposed to the resident? Are there steps that we take to make sure that something just isn't left for a resident who might be a renter?
Yes, so we use RealQuest, which gives us the property owner information. So we mail them the notice on top of mailing it to the, the occupant. So it'll, it'll identify whether or not the property is owner occupied or not. In some cases, unfortunately, the property owners do not update their records with the county assessor's office to provide a new mailing address. So that second notice that gets issued also gets posted on the front door of the property or at the property. So if, for whatever reason, the tenant claims to not receive it in the mail or if the property owner claims not to receive it in the mail, there is a notice that gets posted on the property advising of the violations with all the contact information to reach me if they have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. CD and Mr. Laughlin. I have a couple of questions. They have to do with relationships with other partner agencies or organizations that I'm wondering how they, how they intersect with the, with our code enforcement work. One of them is Republic Services, our, the contractor that, that picks up, of course, trash around town. In some locations, there may, we talked about the sofa that was left over the weekend, right? So in some locations throughout town, at different times, there are, will be some illegal dumping. As best as we can, if we spot it, then we let city staff know about that. But is there anything, again, back to Mayor Protem Salimi's question, anything proactive that we're doing to try to minimize that? It's one question that I have. The other one is also related to an agency partner, that's Caltrans, and the homeless encampments, wherever they may be, how we are addressing those. I can think of two spots in Pinol, one along I-80 and one behind the library, where there may be persons who are unhoused and yet we've got all kinds of debris and more than that in those areas. And, and then my favorite, and I say that rather sarcastically, as much as I love recycling and reusing and the donation boxes that pop up every now and then on private property are just not attended to. And I believe that's the responsibility of the private property owner. So thank you for addressing one that used to be overflowing over where Safeway is, but another one has popped up. So I've got three things there. Homeless encampments and all that litter, Caltrans, Republic Services and our residents and weekly pickups. And, and then private property owners and the periodic pop-up of donation boxes.
So with Republic Services, I believe that this is the information I received from Tamara before. I believe the police department has a contract with Republic Services to have a dump day, free dumpster day, where citizens are allowed to come in and dump the items in the dumpsters rather than illegally dumping or having to go to dump and, and pay the prices there. I had asked if we could maybe get some of those dumpsters and also do some more free dumpster days with the citizens a little more frequently. I don't know what came of that. It would be good because it would help with the illegal dumping. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to stop everybody. Recent cases that I've had for illegal dumping were from house properties from out of town. Unfortunately, they dumped their items here and had all their mailing information. And the police department was great and went out there and talked to them after I asked them to, to come out and remove all their, their trash that was dumped here. It's going to be, that's always going to be a problem, unfortunately, and it happens everywhere. The best thing we could do is provide additional dumpsters for the citizens to help minimize the cost of dumping fees if they have to go to the dump and then help minimize the, the issue of illegal dumping here. During the week, Public Works will go out and, and remove trash or any illegal dumping that's done on city properties, public rightaways. When it comes to dumping on private property, unfortunately, it's the property owner's responsibility to remove those items. And then again, that's when I start my code enforcement cases with the notices. So sometimes, unfortunately, a large amount of illegally dumped items are going to remain in open field that are visible from a very busy street and the property owner has due process and time to remove those items before citations and abatement gets done for that. Caltrans, I don't work close with Caltrans here, unfortunately. I have in other jurisdictions for homeless encampments along the freeways. And then for city property, it's, it's up to the city to remove the trash and debris left behind by homeless encampments. Unfortunately, there's a lot of regulations right now with homeless on what cities can and can't do and how they can and possibly can't remove them. I'm not 100% sure on those, those regulations. That's something I would like to talk to Eric about to possibly help with the homeless community here in Pinol. And then, I'm sorry, what was the, the third question?
The periodic pop-up donation boxes on private property.
Yes, so I've had multiple code enforcement cases for those. Most of the, the property owners claim that they don't provide the companies with any type of permission to, to have those donation boxes left on their property. They say they come in and, one morning, and they're there without any acknowledge. And when they try to have the, the boxes removed, it's a big process with the company to come out. Sometimes they don't come out. And then obviously we have the overflowing issues with them. We do allow them within the city, but they are required to have conditional use permits to have them on any property here, whether it be commercial. I don't, I believe we don't allow them at all on residential, but any commercial properties, they are required to have a conditional use permit. And that would be between the property owner and the company owner to obtain. The property owner could give the company permission to get the, the permit and then they would have to come down to City Hall and, and apply for it and get approval to have that donation been on a specific property.
The different problematic areas or issues. Yeah, I think we'll keep in mind those that still need a bit more attention. Not that we have a solution tonight. And I realize many cities contend with, with code enforcement violations and of course all the unsightly litter, et cetera. It's, it's happening statewide. In fact, we're going to have, we're going to hear a bit about, about that later today from a set of cities that have proposed some legislation to address that with regard to railroads and the public spaces around railroads. I'm not sure we have that issue here. And I'm glad that we don't. I don't, I, I've just not been made aware that we do the occasional homeless encampment near them. Thank you. Councilmember Tate?
Ms. Mayor, you, you kind of sparked a question in my mind. And I'd like to ask, if, if I were to see somebody illegally dumping, I mean, it's one thing if your yard gets out of hand and, you know, someone needs to help. You know what I mean? That's, that's one, one thing. But an illegal dump is somebody decided to load this stuff, drove to Pinol, for whatever reason, unload this stuff on a sidewalk or a park or wherever. Is there, if I were to see that license plate or if there was a camera on my ring or, you know, you know, on the, the houses, I, I mean, there has to be a ramification. I, I want to see people who do that. I don't know, receive a fine, some type of letter. I mean, there has to be a penalty for littering because I know that littering is $1,000 in some areas if you, if you drop a piece of paper. This was a couch. I've seen furniture throughout, throughout the town. And I'm trying to figure out, how do we, as, as a community, start to say, this is not allowed anymore, right? I, I mean, in, I've maybe seen it once or twice. I know that the Methodist Church is an area that, that is out of the way. It's not usually in view of the public. And people have the tendency to dump cars, dump all kinds of stuff there. So I'm just asking, what, how do we empower our citizens to start, you know, reporting this? This is just unacceptable. I mean, everyone I tell is, just get a license plate. But, but I don't know, is that, is that the proper way to do it? And then maybe when we get the communications plan in, we could send something out. But I, I just need to know, is, is there a fine? Is there something that we can, we could do?
So unfortunately with, with illegal dumping, it's a, it's a criminal violation. So all that would be addressed through the police department. I know of other jurisdictions that have had successful cases when it comes to illegal dumping and citizens obtaining license plates or a video of the person doing it and, and the person has been fined and criminally charged for it. For code enforcement here in Pinol, we don't have a procedure for illegal dumping. Again, it would be a matter of the police department and I'm not sure how they would handle that.
And just to be clear, I mean, I, I sit on the board for Recycle More, the joint powers, and, and I'm working on trying to get, you know, more dump, dumpster days and communicating with everybody. So I, I mean, I, I would definitely want to start communicating that out to the public as well, a lot more. But I'm just thinking to myself, you know, when people feel comfortable doing that, how do we address it? So.
Or how, how we would address it when they feel comfortable doing it, unfortunately.
Chief Gang, if you would?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to, to chime in. First of all, Justine does a great job. And remember, she, she's one of, of a city that probably needs five. But that being said, we have worked collaboratively, collaboratively with her before on these type of cases. And, and our officers will do an investigation. So whether it's a license plate, whether or not we can look at neighbors for surveillance cameras, Ring cameras, whatever it be, photo evidence on your phone. So we will do that. We obviously don't want our community going out and actively engaging with the people that are dumping because it just could lead to something that's more dangerous when it's really not worth it. But certainly we will take these cases. We have investigated them before. We've worked really closely with Justine. She does a great job. And our officers have brought citations to people outside of our community. So we will do those type of things. Understand that, you know, we can't control the DA, you know, and, and the flavor of prosecuting someone for illegal dumping in current environment may not be as, as ambitious as we would like here in our city. But it is something to let you know that that won't stop us from continuing to investigate those crimes. So we encourage people to call us. It goes under the whole see it, say it type of campaign that we talk about. But between Justine and our officers, we will go out and actively investigate these. But of course, we need the community members to actively participate and to assist us in successfully catching these type of people.
I will also mention that we've had discussions between code enforcement, police department about hardening some of the illegal dumping hotspots. But short of having, you know, evidence like Justine mentioned earlier, like somebody leaving a telltale sign of evidence, like they're a piece of mail with their address, it really often comes down in terms of having enough to pursue a case, having some sort of video evidence. And it's expensive to install the, a network of video surveillance, particularly in some of the remote parts of the city that are dumping hotspots. So say the Galvez Ruben or up by the railroad tracks. So they, we have talked about different ways of hardening. We've, you know, added additional security measures to some of the access points for some of the hotspots and other things. I guess the county, the city council can consider in the future whether it's, thinks it's appropriate and affordable to invest in other types of hardening or video surveillance for some of those remote locations.
Well, well, in the instance of the, of the couch, right? Like we're just talking about that. And we did have something, can we send them the city bill? I mean, for doing something like that?
So I, I think that would come through the criminal prosecution, retribution through that. Anthony, I, I'm not sure that there's a process in place for us to charge or bill a customer or, excuse me, a citizen with that. I'm not familiar with that. I, I think it would all come out through the criminal prosecution and retribution where it costs the city to have that property removed. Justine may know something different, but that's, that's from my understanding.
Yeah, I just probably should have clarified or made this distinction earlier. But something like illegal dumping on a sidewalk is not, that's really not necessarily a code enforcement issue. That's potentially a criminal legal dumping issue. We don't know who that person, the responsible party is as opposed to when you see a code enforcement violation on a piece of private property. We don't know who the responsible party is, it's the private property owner. So it's a little bit different. And we talk about adding resources to address some of those issues. For instance, with the illegally dumped couch on the sidewalk, that's really a matter of, you know, asking whether our Public Works Maintenance Crew can be available at different hours to do the pickup. It's not so much a code enforcement issue. But things for us to, so that's kind of a slightly different conversation, I think.
Great, thank, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
And, and just really quick, when it comes to illegal dumping on the sidewalk, property owners are responsible up to the face of the curb, meaning basically the gutter of, of the, of what they're responsible for. So if somebody unfortunately dumps in front of their house on the sidewalk, unfortunately, they're responsible for removing that trash as well. I know that Public Works does do it on occasion for health and safety issues or as a courteous for a senior citizen. But it's not something that the city would typically do in front of a privately owned business or residence.
So following up on that, then what is left, what, what is left to do then? The, the private property owner then is cited for something that they, in this case, didn't, didn't do? And that due process would, would begin?
Correct, they would be issued a, a notice to remove it. Typically in a case like that, that's when I would go out and make contact with them and just talk to them verbally and explain the, the process of removing everything. I believe the garbage company here does offer free pickups for large bulky items. And I believe that that would be something that could be in a large bulky item for the garbage service to come out and pick up. But it's, it's probably going to take a little while and the property owner would be responsible for clearing the public right away. So either move it onto their property fully, so the sidewalk is clear, or getting it out of view altogether.
Thanks for the explanation. Chief Gang?
Yeah, just one other point and, and then I'll, I'll let the experts, Justine deal with it. But Jess, I don't want to put any false sense out to the community members that if you get a license plate, we'll be able to do anything. Understand that the license plate comes back to the registered owner and we'd have to have clear and convincing evidence that the person matched the description. So just a license plate alone will not do it. We can't cite, you know, a registered owner of a vehicle. We'd have to catch the person who was actually doing the dumping. And you can understand the challenges that may come with that when it comes to prosecution. It won't stop us from, you know, at least looking into that and investigating it. But just understand, a license plate alone will not equal prosecution or criminal charge.
All right. Mr. Laughlin, you started us off with the presentation. Is there anything you wish to add? The takeaways here for our, for our program?
No, I think, I think, I think, again, Justine is, is doing a great job. And I think the one, the one item that we did mention at the end of the presentation, which was just the potential for needing a little bit of help, possibly contract help during the weed abatement season. And you will notice with the fines, and one thing that we didn't bring out in the presentation is that, you know, code enforcement. uh, you know, code enforcement, uh, does bring in revenue. Um, not enough necessarily to cover the position, but you know, that I think the benefits of code enforcement are just, um, you know, many. Um, and so, uh, you know, again, Justine's doing a great job. And I think, uh, you know, the code enforcement program is, is doing very well.
Okay. Well, you gave us some figures that, uh, perhaps our city manager can work with to try to make the case for, um, additional assistance as we, as we move along through the year. Summer has, let's see, August, we have one month, maybe two left where we still will probably want to have more of the weed abatement, uh, continue. So, um, okay, you let us, you, you let city manager know and then he'll let us know, I suppose. Thank you, everyone. Um, the action before was to receive the report. Uh, appreciate all the enforcing that you do, Ms. CD.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda.
Madam, madam mayor, we do have one public comment.
So true to be reminded of the next step. Thank you very much. Um, please, let's hear the public comment.
Okay, we have a public comment from Rafael Menas.
So I'd like to thank, uh, Justine or Officer CD for the work that she did to rehabilitate that area on Penon. I had to drive past that area every time I left the neighborhood that I live in to go anywhere else. And it was always a fire concern sort of in the back of my mind. I remember talking with Chief Waincoop's predecessor, Chief Coons about it. He said, yeah, that's the second biggest fire risk the city has, second only to, you know, the big fields out behind the shopping centers. So I'm really grateful that you folks abated it. So I wanted to add my voice to that of the constituent that spoke to Councilmember Toms as well. And my second question is with regards to that property, because you mentioned that there was a fair amount of difficulty actually getting a notice through to them. But one thing I sort of have difficulty with understanding there is that presumably they still manage to pay their property taxes yearly. So there's some direct connection between at least their bank accounts and the county assessors department. So how is it that the county assessor wouldn't have accurate information to reach them if they're getting paid by them? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, there are no more public comments?
Thank you. Close public comment period on this matter. So Mr. Menas, uh, raises a question and now piques my curiosity. How, how well, um, can the city access the, uh, tax assessor's, um, database to identify property owners? Maybe it's, it's our city attorney that has to respond to that. But in, in any case, what, is that, is that a, is it feasible to work, uh, with that? Uh, group of people to enhance our, um, reach as necessary?
That, that is a resource that I believe is available as long as it's publicly available information, um, which I think their, um, you know, property records would be. Um, so that, that would be an option, um, that we could pursue.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll add a comment too. Um, yeah, this is something I've seen over the years. There's kind of a little bit of a nuance to it. If you've got a property owner that lives out of town or a, a lot of times they use management companies, which it's, it's very, you have the person on the, the tax role, which we have access to. Um, and that's what Justine uses to notify the property owners. But then sometimes, um, there's a property manager who manages their property for them and pays their, their taxes and does other functions. And that, that information is not publicly available. And it's very difficult to find out who the management company is. So, um, you know, in the case that was shared this evening, I think, um, you know, you're, we're kind, you know, this, this city ends up being at a little bit of a loss to, to try and locate those folks. Um, in the, in those kinds of situations, but they're very rare, really.
In, in, in any case, it takes someone with a lot of diligence to pursue and follow, follow up on all the pieces that, um, have, that are there, uh, for adequate due process and eventually some behavior change. Um, and hopefully, um, no recurrence of the misbehavior. So thanks for hanging in there with us, for us and for the city of Penole. Again, Ms. CD, can't thank you enough. And Mr. Loughlin for overseeing the activities related to code enforcement. All right, we move on, uh, to the next item on our agenda. And that's, um, about the American Rescue Plan Act, funds in additional fiscal year 2122 appropriations process. Ms. Guillory, uh, I believe has a report for us and then the council will consider approval of staff's recommendations.
So I have a, a short report before we get into the, the conversation. And we'll be asking for the city council's input and direction on an appropriations process for the American Rescue Plan Act and also for the additional appropriations to be added to the fiscal year to meet into me too budget. I just want to, um, note that it's important to know that this is a recommendation on the process and not specific appropriations. So that conversation will be reserved for the budget workshops that I'll talk about a little bit later. Um, but yeah, this is just on this, uh, appropriations process itself. So the purpose of the process is to establish, establish an organized approach um, to guide the expenditure plan that we will eventually develop for the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, so what's known as ARPA. And to also ensure that that expenditure plan aligns with the allowable uses of the ARPA guidance as established by the U.S. Department of the Treasury. And then also to promote collaboration amongst the stakeholders, which includes the elected officials or city council, um, city staff and also the community, individuals and businesses. So just a little background, which is also mapped out in the staff report, is the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law in March of this year. It included a 1.9 trillion dollar economic stimulus package, of which 350 billion was earmarked for state and local communities in response to the impact on the economy due to the pandemic. Penole's allocation was determined to be 4.6 million, of which we, we've received half, um, in the amount of 2.3 million this past July. And we're expecting to receive the second distribution next July. There are five main categories of allowable uses. That includes, um, public health, such as e- efforts to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Um, negative economic impacts, um, due to highly impacted industries such as tourism. It includes premium pay for essential workers who provide food services, childcare and other healthcare services. Infrastructure improvements such as those for the water and sewer, uh, system upgrades and also broadband. And then lastly, revenue replacement, um, to backfill any revenue loss. And there is a calculation that has been provided as a part of the guidance to determine what the revenue loss has been due to the pandemic.
And just to clarify, pardon the interruption, do you need to have up slides for the public to view as you're presenting? Because I'm only seeing the slide about the item itself on the agenda. And it's helpful as you've explained this to us, um,
Yes.
For the public to view. Thank you.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, it is, um, not in presentation mode just yet. And now we're seeing, um, now you've got it.
Okay, I didn't, I'm sorry. I have double screens here, so. So I mentioned the allowable uses. Some of the ineligible uses includes, um, can't use the funds to offset any new tax measures that were planned or to expand any current tax measures. And then lastly, um, it can't be used to deposit into any pension funds. In terms of timeline, the funds need to be obligated by December 31st, 2024. And they have to be fully expended by December 31st, 2026. And any funds that are not expended will have to be returned to the U.S. Department of the Treasury. So along the same lines of developing the appropriations process for the ARPA funds, we're also, um, including the additional appropriations for the, for the fiscal year 2122. Um, back when we presented or staff presented the revised final proposed budget, there were a number, number of council-directed initiatives that were added to the budget to be funded with the unassigned fund balances in the general fund and also the Measure S funds to the 204.4 billion. So at that time, council went through an exercise of adding projects to the budget. It was an opportunity to, um, use some of those unassigned fund balance to address some operational needs and also some, um, unfunded capital improvement projects. So this is a recap of those items that were added to the budget. Last week on August 10th, the finance sub, subcommittee convened a meeting that included staff. And staff presented a number of recommendations to the subcommittee to be considered um, for budget workshops to start to work on the appropriations process for both sources of funds for ARPA and for the additional appropriations. And here were some of the recommendations that came out of that meeting that the finance subcommittee did agree to along with staff. And one included engaging an outside consultant to facilitate two budget workshops. And I'll talk more about those in a second. And the goal of this is to help with streamlining the process and to maximize participation among stakeholders and include, um, community engagement in that process as well. And networking with some of our peer agencies, we've noted that, um, a number of them have en- engaged outside consultants to help with facilitating this process. And the capacities range, um, from them fully consultants, fully administering the ARPA funds program to them just helping out with some of the budget workshops and some of the outreach in the, the community. We have received a proposal from HDO, which is our sales tax and property tax consultant, to help us out, um, with, um, engaging or, sorry, with facilitating the workshops that we plan to hold. Another recommendation that came out of that meeting was to send mailers out to all households in, you know, to expand our outreach. Um, and this is in addition to our regular electronic communications that we typically send through the city's website and through City Hall's Facebook. But, um, including those paper mailers to make sure that we're reaching a broader audience and encouraging involvement in this process. Uh, we also talked about engaging other resources such as the, the chamber to assist us in that outreach. And the goal is to host two budget workshops, at least initially. And we have two different expected outcomes from those, um, workshops. The first would be working, um, all together along with the community on brainstorming and looking at the projects that could be funded with the ARPA funds based on the guidelines. And then also reviewing or discussing and brainstorming on additional appropriations to be funded with the general fund and Measure S unassigned fund balance and ranking those items, um, to narrow down the top ideas to be, to receive appropriations. And then for the second meeting, we would look at some actual decision-making on those top ideas. Now, in between the two meetings, staff would need time to analyze the costs and also the feasibility and bring that information back to the second meeting for consideration. That would be a part of the, the decision-making process. Um, also wanted to add that we would propose to hold these meetings, meetings on Saturdays. And this is for broader participation and to have a more, um, open dialogue between staff, the council and the public. And working on this process, we are also, um, recommending to utilize interactive technologies. Again, just for more input, um, from the, the community. We have explored Balancing Act, which was something that was introduced to us by Councilmember Murphy. And staff did receive a demonstration on that. Um, and that's one of the interactive technologies that we could use. And it, it has a, a number of functionalities. We could launch that before the meeting, so it, eh, in advance of the workshops. Or we could, um, use it during the workshops for more interaction and discussions around, um, the projects or initiatives to be funded with those sources of funds. Um, we could use two different modules. We could set one up for the ARPA funds themselves and then set one up for the additional appropriations. And then also, this is something that the city could continue to use for more participatory budgeting later on down the line. We could also use it for a five-year financial plan and for the capital improvement, uh, plan development. So there's a, a number of benefits to using this technology. There are als- there are also other tools that we could use, um, with Zoom. There's polling, um, tools. There are also prioritizing and simulations that we could use again during the meeting to, um, kinda drive our conversations and steer us toward, um, determining what are those top ideas that will go forward to be considered for decision-making. So with that, I'm available for any questions. And again, staff is asking for the city council's input on these recommendations. And then I'd also like to ask if there are any finance subcommittee members, um, if there's anything that, that I've left out that you would like to add to that, please do so. Thank you.
I'm gonna, um, turn to, um, the, um, members of the finance subcommittee. Mayor Protem, you're a part of that. I was part of that. Is there anything additional you would like to add? Um, then I'll turn to council for questions and then, um, any comments from the public. Mayor Protem Salimi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no comment at this moment.
Okay, um, as for me, um, thank you to staff for fleshing out what was a skeleton idea a couple of months ago. Um, being part of the subcommittee, I was eager to talk about another topic, but that's coming down the line. This is why we're having a process to allow for multiple, multiple comments and opinions and et cetera. To provide input on something that is, um, a historic, um, uh, federal appropriation to us locally, that we can somehow come up with some ideas to, to maximize best use of those. So thank you for all your work to prepare then and to prepare us now. Uh, Councilmember Tate?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, you mentioned Zoom and polling. Are, are we anticipating this meeting being in person? Hybrid or, or, um, virtual?
So that hasn't been determined. Um, I, we did throw around the idea of a hybrid meeting. I don't know if the technology is in place to do that just yet. So we, I would say, um, we're probably looking at Zoom at this point.
So, so I know that the Brown Act, uh, uh, maybe Eric and the city manager could kinda chime in. Is that, you know, as this meeting's coming up, I, I'm wondering if it's gonna be after the, the time that the, the governor's order, uh, emergency order on the Brown Act, uh, short circuits? Or turns out, you know, goes out or abandoned? I don't know what it was called.
Uh, I'll just mention, yeah, so the governor's order essentially, um, the executive order which permits us to meet virtually and not in person. Um, that expires on September 30th. So unless there's a change to, um, the existing executive order, the plan is to have, um, in-person meetings after September 30th or, uh, to have some sort of, sort of hybrid in-person and then also, um, you know, Zoom. So that's, that's the plan. So depending on the scheduling of this meeting, that would definitely have an impact.
Great. Thank, thank you.
Other questions from council members about the process that was presented? So I take it you're delighted about the process? You find it acceptable? Ready to go on to the next step, which might be simple, as simple as scheduling something given the, the, the ups and downs of where we are related to COVID. So, uh, yeah, to be determined. Which again, uh, speaks to, to, um, appreciation for, for the planning. Now, all this year, most of last year, uh, that definition of a plan and how it's gotta be flexible. Or, is some of us are eager to, to have things laid out neatly and scheduled, but you know, not necessarily the case with COVID around. So thanks all for being flexible. And also what allows for some of this flexibility is the timeline associated with the appropriation for our funds. is the timeline associated with the appropriation for our funds and the year when, when they must be expended or returned otherwise. And we have a little bit more time than just a couple of months, even through, through this year, to see how things turn out with regard to COVID and, and being open and, and having, whether it's chambers or another public setting where, where we can gather along with community members. Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Tave, you have another idea or question?
Yeah, it mentioned a consultant. So at some point, this is going to come back once this is flushed out a little bit more. So I guess we'll just have to wait for them to come on board, right? And then, you know, work with staff to get there. Okay.
Well, I guess there are a couple of different ways to approach it. I think, I don't know that it has to come back. So if the council decided to, so again, the, the information that Director Gilery presented, these are the recommendations that came out of the Finance Subcommittee for how to structure this decision-making process for the ARPA funds and whether the council wants to have any additional appropriations from general fund or Measure S fund balance at this time. So again, these are, this is coming out of the Finance Subcommittee. There are probably existing funds already budgeted that would be adequate to bring a consultant on board, depending on the scope. So if it's the direction of the council tonight to move forward with this plan, outside consultant facilitation, mailers, two workshops, interactive technology, then we would go about finding a consultant. You know, they might have a, a kind of an off-the-shelf approach to doing these based on what they've done in other communities. And then we might simply communicate what that approach is to the city council. I don't know that unless it's a radical difference from what was agreed upon tonight, we probably wouldn't come back for a specific approval of it. It would be, it feels like it might be an unnecessary step.
Would that be something that you would send in a memo or just, hey, everybody? Okay.
Yeah, that's what we would do. We would communicate what the plan is. I do think staff, in addition to this, if the council were to agree on this recommendation, we were to start moving forward, I do think it'd be useful for staff to get a sense of what timeline council has in mind. And I'll leave it to Director Gilery to share some additional thoughts. And as she mentioned, we do think it would be necessary to have some time between a first workshop and a second workshop. First workshop is going to be brainstorming and a little bit of polling, but no final decision-making. And then staff would have to have some time to figure out what the costs of some of the different ideas that are under consideration are, when they could be scheduled and things like that. So one of the time constraints is there needs to be a little bit of time, maybe a month's worth of time between the first workshop and the second. So then I think the other question for council tonight is in what timeframe are you hoping to see a first workshop? You know, and I think so Director Gilery, you might want to give us your perspective on how soon from now, if it means engaging consultant. We already know who some of the successful consultants are in this area. So I think that process would be relatively quick. But what kind of a timeframe, Director Gilery, do you have in mind for the first workshop? And maybe we can compare some calendars here live this evening to identify a, a date that we think will work.
So initially, we did have two dates set up and those have become obsolete at this point. We had 9/11, September 11th, and then we had September 25th. But we learned that you all have a number of events during the week of the 25th. So it would be after September 25th.
So somebody wants to, and I know that there are various events that you all are attending in your council member capacities as well as possibly conflicting personal events. We'd love to get council consensus on a date for a Saturday workshop. We're envisioning something that would be a part day, a function, probably starting mid-morning to just after lunch. If somebody wants to get the conversation started on a potential date, we would love to get that direction this evening if we could.
Okay, I'll propose something for, for sake of discussion. October 9th as a first workshop. That takes us for a month in between to date again in November before Thanksgiving. Allowing that one month period. So that's what I'm thinking in terms of dates. And I've got a couple of comments before, before I forget about this. With regard to the mailing, also allowing time for people, not only to receive it in their mail, but to have enough copies around town in different spots where people congregate. So the matter of, of printing more than just for a single mailing, but so that there can be stacks of, of those notices available in different spots around town. And then the framing of what the workshops are about. This is something that Treasurer Swearingen mentioned in Subcommittee or in Committee, Finance Committee. And that is that, you know, there might, we don't want to have people have a different expectation about what these funds can do for the city. For example, yeah, well, I don't even have an example at this point, but just to be clear on what, what we're doing in language that is not of the regulatory, federal register type, but just as simple as we can make it for all of us to understand what it is we're doing and the expectations coming out of meeting our specific workshop goals. Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Thank you. With two points I was just going to mention, I think it may be valuable to maybe reach out to some of our schools and see if we can get the announcement also on their billboards. I see a lot of electronic billboards between Pinole Valley High School, Pinole Middle School, wherever else there's an electronic billboard in Pinole. Maybe we could add that as a, another approach. And then in terms of the date, I'm going to push back, I'm sorry, and say October 16th works for me, October 9th does not, unfortunately. So I was just hoping that maybe that would work for everybody. And then November 1st is fine for me. So thank you. I just wanted to say that.
So October 16th point 1 is going to us.
I have a-
That's a member Tom's.
I have an opposite conflict.
Okay, that's here.
But for November, I can do November 6th, but I can't do the following week.
Sorry for those of us keeping score at home. Councilmember Toms, does that mean that you, you cannot do October 16th?
It's, it's difficult. I'd have to make some adjustments.
Okay, so we're talking about a, a workshop that we're, I think, tentatively envisioning and we'll of course talk with the workshop consultant and run this past you when the details are finalized, that probably runs something like 9:30 to 1:30 or so, or maybe till 1:00, if that changes anything about people's scheduling availability. So we're trying to, we don't want to make it so long that it's, disincentivizes people to participate. Does that, I don't know if that changed anything, or I'll let you continue with the conversation about potential dates.
So October 9th didn't work, October 16th didn't work for all. So let's try October 23rd and then a follow-up date. So a follow-up date a month from then would be November 20th. And that also, is also before Thanksgiving. Otherwise, we could do to December 4th. That takes us into the first week of December, but not past that because then holiday times comes around. Councilmember Murphy?
It's just, I was raising my hand as an affirmation to those dates. October 23rd and November 20th work for me.
Do those dates not work for anyone?
I think you said that it was, was October 23rd and December?
Well, one, the first attempt was October 23rd and about a month from then would be, would take us to-
The Saturday before Thanksgiving?
Saturday before Thanksgiving. Alternatively, we would do December 4th as the second workshop date. If that works better for all.
That works for me.
Who said, who said November 17th? Oh, no, I'm sorry. What was it? November 13th? Sorry, everybody froze.
November 20th, I think, was the recommendation.
I think you might have limited participation if it's the Saturday before Thanksgiving week. That's my only concern.
Mayor, October 23rd and December 4th does not work for me.
I'm sorry, does, does not?
Does not.
Which of those two days do not work for you?
Neither October 23rd or December 4th does not work.
Okay.
Yeah, it's always a little challenge to find a, a time that works for everybody on a non-regular council day because that, we have that, of course, all blocked off and committed.
Does it have to be exactly a month? Can it be a week over? Not really, right?
Not at all, but it sounds like we're having a, a challenge just finding the first date. So, but, you know, the, the second date can be, yeah, could be four or five weeks. I think we're-
Right.
Can we maybe, maybe look at-
I'm so sorry. I will, I just realized this is actually not in-person. And so what we're saying is we're still meeting via Zoom. So I'm happy to circle back to October 9th. I'm sorry to do this, but I think this is probably more helpful than not. And say I am happy to be on a call on Zoom, just not in person.
And this is a work, well, I guess if, if the Brown Act compels, compels us to come back, I mean, I guess that's going to change the virtual thing, right?
Yeah, I think-
Just as a point of clarification.
Not sure.
Even under the prior rules of the Brown Act, there, council members can attend remotely. They would just need to notice their, their location. So if you're taking the meeting from, you know, a remote location, you would need to notice your whereabouts so that members of the public can attend wherever you are. So that was the prior rules under the Brown Act. If the executive order sunsets, that would, that would be the rule. So Councilmember Murphy could attend somewhere else. You would just need to notice your location. When I've done that, I might use a library and you could, and people can, you know, attend the meeting with you at the library while you're on a conference call. So I just wanted to mention that.
But somebody will need to be in-person at the, the defined in-person location, which thereby makes it essentially a hybrid meeting. But that's, you know, I, I'm, that's a chance I'm willing to take that we'll have that capacity at that time. If it means finding a date that'll work, which seems like a more challenging hurdle at this point. So does October 9th work for everybody? Knowing that some of you will, at least one of you will need to be in-person and others can participate remotely?
That works for me.
That works for me.
Okay, Councilmember Tave, I saw a head nod. Yes. Mayor Martinez-Rubin, does that work for you? And Mayor Protem, yes, a head nod. So they've got, okay. And then, awesome, great. And so did we have a, so roughly four weeks from then, we're back to that? Whatever that was, what was that?
I'm wondering if the council would consider having one Saturday and one Tuesday that's not our regular meeting night? If that would help us find a date?
That would take us to five and a, or four and a half weeks would be Tuesday, November 9th.
And I'm, I'm out of town then.
Sorry.
People think that November 20th, if, if we would get people attending, you know, I'm available. I just wanted to bring that up, that it might be, you know, since it's the Saturday before Thanksgiving, people might be busy.
Yeah, how about, how about then December 4th? We're going to December 4th as the second Saturday workshop?
I'm not available on that day, Madam Mayor.
Ah, thank you for the reminder. Yes, that's what happened there. Okay, that was a problem there.
But are, but we have one more council meeting before, just to clarify. We have December, I'm sorry, we have one more Saturday before the last council meeting of December, which is December 11th. Is that correct?
There will be a, right, I mean, December 11th is an available date. We're not, I don't think we've been thinking about these dates in relation to council meeting necessarily, but, yeah. And I, I didn't hear, we talked about November 9th and now I'm, sorry, October 9th and now I'm, I don't know if we discarded the four weeks later date because the 9th didn't initially work. Does November 6th not work for somebody?
That's okay with me.
The second budget meeting or for the second work-
For the second one, does November 6th work?
Works for me.
These are good times, trust me. Process. Okay, Councilmember Tave, does it work for you?
Yes, it will work.
Okay, and Councilmember Protem, okay, so that, we got it.
We got it.
October 9th and November 6th. And I will, as soon as we have the specifics, including the facilitator and more details on the process, I'll share that with the city council and you can let me know if there's anything that feels like a significant departure from the plan that was recommended by the Finance Subcommittee and approved. So I guess to formalize this, we're looking for a motion to approve the Finance Subcommittee's recommendation and the dates discussed at tonight's council meeting.
I make a motion to approve it. The date of Saturday of November 6th and Saturday, October 9th.
I'll second that motion.
Did we have a, we, we had first, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Murphy, thank you. Okay, any opposed? All right, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. We're looking forward to supporting these. It'll be really exciting, I think.
Just one, one quick question for the city attorney. Can you just clarify what are the protocols around the noticing of location? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so when we publish the agenda for the meeting, so the, the meeting agenda, you will, or we will need to include the location that you plan to attend, wherever that is, so the, the address. The, the location will need to be made, it'll, it'll need to be open to the public. So, you know, sometimes people don't like to notice, you know, a private residence, for example, because, because you do need to make it available to the public. So if there's a, a city that you might be in, if you could find a, a public location and I could, we could help with that. But that, that's really the only requirement. You just need to notice the location of where you will be. And then you would just call in via conference call or Zoom, depending on what's available. So those are the requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for noting October 9th and November 6th on your calendars. Specifics to be determined. Ms. Stone, are there any public comments on this agenda item?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no public comments.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, thank you council members and staffer taking us through this. Next item on the agenda is to appoint a council member and up to two alternates to serve as voting delegates at the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And the action before us is by minute order, appoint delegate and alternates and provide direction on the league resolution. So there were two resolutions and it's part of our packet. Assistant City Manager, the other sub, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. So the League of City is hosting its annual conference on September 22nd and 24th this year. As customary, at the end of the conference, the member agencies delegate vote on resolutions submitted by agencies of matter of, of matters of importance for action to be taken by the League of City's legislative personnel. This year, there are two resolutions for consideration. As a member agency, the city of Pinole has a vote in the matter. Via tonight's action, staff is seeking the appointment of a council member as a voting delegate and alternate voting delegates in case the mayor and/or the voting delegate cannot make the conference. Now, in years past, the mayor, if he or she attended the conference, was designated as the voting delegate. We also request an alternate in case the mayor cannot attend the voting session. This year, there are two resolutions that have been introduced for consideration. I'll provide a brief summary of each resolution as the report provides more details. And then after my report, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The first resolution for consideration is in response to the need for fair and equitable distribution of sales tax from online, in-state purchases. Historically, online sales and use tax from, um, online, out-of-state or in-state when the, uh, facility is owned by a third party are allocated to the countywide pool based on point of delivery. So in the case of, um, a purchase from a company, let's just say, New Jersey, when it's shipped to Pinole, uh, the county receives a sales tax for that, and then the county distributes the sales tax to all the agencies in the county based on the proportion of sales tax that they receive. So we do get a percentage of that, and over the year, the last year, due to COVID, we have seen an increase in the countywide pool revenue, which has helped us with regards to any dips in our sales tax. Uh, however, with the recent, uh, reallocation of sales tax from countywide pools to the location of where the fulfillment center is located. The issue surrounding sales tax has been brought up to light. Uh, there was a recent change in the structure of an online facility. Whereabouts sales of the products, uh, where they were shipped to the county were not received by the county, but rather the jurisdiction in where, in which the fulfillment center was located. Because of this, uh, countywide pools have seen a slight decrease in their sales tax, while the city that has the fulfillment center has seen a large increase. Um. While the sponsors of the resolution are not opposed to a portion of the sales tax going to the jurisdiction in which the fulfillment center is located, due to the delivery locations, other agencies are also impacted through wear and tear of streets, air quality and traffic, um, mainly due because fulfillment centers, uh, vehicles are going to different locations. Uh, so those agencies feel that they should receive a portion of that sales tax and not go one hundred percent to the jurisdiction. So Resolution One is requesting, uh, the state legislator, legislature to pass legislation that provides for a fair and equitable distribution of the sales tax from inline, online purchases based on data where products are shipped to and that are rightly full taken into consideration the impacts of fulfillment centers. Um, so that's the first resolution, it's basically, um, let's find a fair and equitable way to distribute the sales tax and not just go to one jurisdiction. The second resolution, which was presented by cities in Southern California, seeks the governor to appropriate funding to the California Public Utilities Commission to inspect railroad lines and to ensure cleanliness and public safety in the right-ofways, railroad wide, right-ofways. Um, as we have seen throughout all communities, we've seen an increase in homeless, um, homelessness encampments, as well as illegal dumping graffiti, and in Southern California, they're seeing a portion of this in the railroad right-ofways, where cities do not have the ability to go in and enforce their codes. Uh, the right-ofways are railroad right-ofways that are overseen by the CPUC, and therefore, cities are asking the legislature to appropriate funding to provide to, uh, CPUCs so that they could enforce, uh, cleanliness of the railroad right-ofways, um, by removing encampments and assuring safety. If not, then, uh, this resolution is also asking for cities authority to go in and clean the encampment areas, uh, for the public safety of the residents. You know, as we know, and we've seen in our city, uh, there are homes right near the railroad, uh, right-ofways, and encampments do cause, um, with the, with litter and other things do cause a slightly nuisance, uh, nuisance, uh, to the property owners, and therefore, this res- resolution is seeking to address that issue. Um, that concludes sort of my report as the two resolutions, but the action that we're asking tonight is for the appointment of, uh, voting delegate and alternate, and also so that the council can have a discussion on the two items before you and direct a voting delegate on how to vote on the matter at the League of California Cities. And with that, I'll answer any questions the council may have.
Council members, questions about the presentation? Council member Tate?
Oh, so I know that we, we talked about this before, about how in online, like if you're shopping in Amazon or online, uh, distributor, that it would, the taxes would come back to the city, or is it to the county? It sounds like from this resolution, it comes to the county, and then everyone gets a distribution of that sales tax, um, accordingly. Um. Does this res- so, will this resolution, that tax would not go to the county and come straight to Pinole? Just to try and put it plainly.
Yes, no, uh, right now, if, if you are an online company out of state and you purchase something in California, the sales tax goes to the county in which, uh, the product was delivered.
I see.
If you are a, uh, online company in California, and, uh, the sales tax goes to the jurisdiction in which the fulfillment center is located. If you have a storefront in California, then the sales tax goes to the city in which, uh, the product is purchased and delivered.
I see.
So the resolution is not changing in anything, it's asking the legislature to find a fair and equitable, a method for distribution of the sales tax that's going to the jurisdiction in which the fulfillment center is located.
Hmm.
Hmm. So to add to that, if I may, and, and you can let me know if I'm understanding this correctly, in Pinole, we do not have fulfillment centers. And so we get the tax from online purchases, um, via the county, because the county is the recipient of those taxes. Um. If we were a city that had fulfillment centers, we would be delighted the way the stand, the law stands now, because the taxes would be coming to us, but we don't. So for us many, um, cities that don't have these fulfillment centers, um, they, they are receiving less tax, sales tax now, uh, from, um, online sales because taxes are going to those cities that have the fulfillment centers, and the counties then have less of that in those cities, which would be our case as well.
That is correct.
Thank you, um, council member Toms.
Yeah, just, um, for the out-of-state, um, suppliers, um, what kind of formula is used to distribute the, um, tax that goes into the county pool? Is it based on population or based on, um, you know, a base proper, uh, sales tax that we're already getting? Or, or are you, do you know?
I, I'm sorry, the, so the question was, um, based on online, out-of-state sales, the money that goes to the countywide pool, how is it distributed to local jurisdictions?
Do you know what the formula involves, is it based on population, or?
I believe it's based on the sales tax, but I could find out, the sales tax that each agency receives, but I could find out and get back to.
So if we had more brick and mortars, we would get more online, if it's, if it's based on, on that, but if it's based on population, it would be a different distribution.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, it's based on your normal, uh, sales tax revenues, and Director Guillory, if that's, um, if Assistant City Manager, my recollections are both incorrect, please, uh, correct us.
Yeah, well, we know definitely the brick and mortars are not getting the taxes that are otherwise going to either a county or a city with a fulfillment center, at least a portion of that, we know that.
Yeah, well, regardless of what the formula is, um.
Right.
I, I would be in favor of the delegate voting and the affirmative on both of these. Um, I think the other question is, do we have, is the mayor going to be attending? And is the, um, Mayor Protem planning to attend? And, and I would think that those would be, that would be our delegate and our alternate.
I can tell council that I am planning to attend, Mayor Protem Salimi, are you planning to attend the Cal Cities Conference?
I am open. I'm sorry. I am open, I don't know what happened to my video here. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
I lost video, do I, yes, I'm open.
You're open means, um, you're not yet registered for the conference as far as you, you're not registered yet, I, I, is that correct?
I, I am available that weekend, I did not register yet.
Yeah.
However, if another council member would like to go, since they have not been yet at those conferences, I, if Councilmember Murphy has not been attending any, uh, of, of those conferences yet.
Yes, I recall that you attended and you were a delegate, maybe two years ago, when the conference was held in Southern California.
Yeah, I attended the last, I, I attended one in, uh, Southern California, and also went to, uh, the, the one in Long Beach, as well as the one in Sacramento three years ago, so. I, and I was the voting, uh, member two years ago.
Hmm. Councilmember.
I'd like, I'd like to give opportunities to other council members who have not been attending and to attend it for, if they wish to. However, if they don't have the time, I'll be more than happy to go there.
Got it, yeah, yeah, and that's, that's the, um, that's the, uh, issue, the time availability, so, um, council member Tate?
Oh, so, yeah, I'd like to offer to, to go and be a delegate, um, I, I'm just wondering, are, is all the council members going to this conference?
Yeah, on that point, I, I think we're all invited to attend, so it's a matter of availability as to whether we will register for the conference or not.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, um, be the delegate if, if that's all right, um, with the rest of the council.
Okay, so it looks like we've got a, um, a delegate and alternate delegate, um.
Or the alternate, yeah, delegate.
Yeah. Hmm. Do we need two alternates? I forgot what the, uh, packet, the instructions read.
You could have up to two, you could have up to two alternates.
Okay, backup to a backup, just in case.
And do we need two motions? There's two separate items here, do we need to have two separate motions?
Let's, uh, let's do that, so we can be clear. So on the delegates, um, is there another alternate, someone else wishing to be an alternate delegate? Who else is attending for certain, or will be?
I'll be attending, I'm happy to be the second alternate, or, yeah. It, I'm attending and I'm happy to take the second alternate role, or not.
So I'll move that, um, mayor, the mayor be the delegate, and, um, council member Tave be the first alternate, and council member Murphy be the second alternate for, um, voting.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
I can't.
Thank you, any objections? Any abstentions? Motion carries, okay, we got that one out of the way, now we're gonna talk about Resolution number one. Um, I'll move that we vote, um, we, we support Resolution number one, which has to do with an equitable distribution of online, with a proportion of online taxes. Uh, the, the formula yet to be determined, it's, it's just raising the issue to the legislation, the, uh, Cal Cities.
That is correct.
Yeah, just a quick question, Mayor. Is this something, um, I know this is a resolution that's not necessarily binding to state government and, and local government taxes, but I'm wondering if this is something that our council would be able to take action on, if we all were unanimous tonight on the, I mean, it sounds like we all are unanimous, that this is a resolution that we were supportive of, um, which means that ideally, the, the solution itself could be enacted, I'm wondering, like, are we able to enact a, a solution as such in our own city? Before the state does?
If I understand the way Cal Cities works, the delegate, the, the, the delegates are voting on behalf of the city, so that is the action? It will help support, um, whatever happens.
Proposed legislation, as far as I understand.
Let me actually reframe my question, cause I, I don't think it was a question for you, Mayor, no offense, I think it was a question for the city attorney, which was, are we allowed to create this equitable taxation model that we're seeing in this resolution by ourself if we want to?
Ah, okay, that's a state issue, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, yeah, that, that is, uh, would need to be enacted through state legislation, so I think the idea here is to have the League of California Cities advocate for state leg- yeah, legislation at the state level that would affect, effectively, um, create that equitable distribution.
Okay, thank you. And I am supportive of it, of course, I appreciate it.
So I think I moved, or I wanted to move, um, that we support Resolution number one.
I'll second.
Any objection? Any abstention? Motion carries. Resolution number two.
And I'll move that we support Resolution number two.
Related to asking, uh, for additional funding to the CPUC to do something about, um, safety and cleanliness along the railroads.
Second now.
Thank you, council member Murphy, any, um, other discussion? Okay. Any objections? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Council has agreed to support Resolution number one and two at the Cal Cities Conference, and thank you for voting for your mayor to be the delegate and alternate, council member Tate and council member Murphy. Okay. Any public comment on this agenda item?
And a mayor, there are no public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. We'll move on to, um, Agenda item number eleven and Reports and Communication. My report, to make it brief, uh, the Historic Preservation Committee met on July twenty-seventh, we had Mr. John Jarvis, retired director of the National Park Service, present on, um, Historic Preservation, and the committee began discussion of, um, well, began and concluded its discussion on the overlay map associated with the ordinance, and began discussion of the Old Town Design Guidelines, we will continue what, um, edits, changes, revisions and updates there may be on those guidelines at the meeting now scheduled for September first at five PM, if any members of the public wish to participate and/or view that. On July twenty-ninth, there was a Westcat Board meeting, and I will ask, uh, council member Toms to further, I'm sharing news about that. One, one item on the agenda that I think would be of interest to the public is that the Westcat Board, uh, agreed, uh, voted to approve that in the month of September, throughout the month of September, fares would be free. So, uh, take a ride on our Westcat buses, and also on October sixth, uh, there will be no fares collected, and that's because it is one of the California Clean Air Days. On August fifth, at the mayor's conference, there was an update as to the, uh, I'm gonna call it the A three or triple A model, that the county and its, um, community-based organizations and other staff partners and the, um, Managers Association, uh, City Manager, what is the name of the, of your association? I, it's not CIMA, but it's the County Association of City.
The Managers Association, PMA, it's just for Contra, it's for county.
Thank you, thank you. Has been working along with county behavioral health staff to create a model that would address the response to, a crisis intervention response related to behavioral issues. And the update is that beginning of this month, the Miles Hall Community Crisis Hub, it is an actual location that is staffed by a multidisciplinary team. It's available, it has started piloting the response that the county foresees, still needs to be developed and foresees being the model of anywhere, anyone, anywhere, anytime being provided mental health services. So we will hear more about that as this is a pilot and it's a model that's being phased in with August being the beginning of that. At this point, for any member of the public that needs to access mental health services, there are multiple set of phone numbers, which makes it difficult to actually access services sometimes. You know, there's 911, our chief, chief gang can talk about that at some point. There's 211, and then there are other suicide prevention hotlines, et cetera. So there's myriad number of services making it sometimes challenging to really find where the more immediate service is going to be available. And so the hub is being set up to help address the access and easier navigation of behavioral health-related services. At the August 10 Finance Subcommittee, of course, we heard staff present and also had some discussion and provided some recommendations as to the process that will have this council, the community, and staff have the discussions about the appropriation of ARPA funds as well as any additional appropriations in this fiscal year in our regular capital and operations budget. That is my update to you. And I will ask for City Council Committee Reports and Communications since we do not have any mayor or council appointments tonight. I'm jumping to Item 11C. And I will begin with Mayor Pro Tem Salini.
No comments.
Councilmember Tave?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention to everybody that August 28th, there's going to be a household hazardous waste drop-off in El Sabrani. The church, it's at, I believe it's, it is 3301 Morningside Drive in El Sabrani. So on August 28th, so you can bring paint, fuel cans, that kind of stuff. And, which is always difficult because sometimes you're just sitting in the garage because we have no, we don't know where to put it. So I am working with the Director at Recycle More just having discussions as to how we can increase the dump days that we have, only because, you know, we want to make sure that everybody has got a good outlet to drop stuff off. Also, I did talk to them about compost and having bin setup in a location where we can have free compost for our community as well. So just a couple of ideas that I got circling over there. And then the kids start at school. So the guy, everybody, just visit West Contra Costa Unified School District's website. It's WCCUSD.net. When you get a second, if the kids are back at school, they're posting information about what to do, what, you know, processes and flow charts and stuff. So on how to, you know, with COVID and everything, just what to expect. So that's pretty much it. I'm just looking forward to the Cal Cities Conference. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
Well, thank you for having those ideas circle with our regional partners and having some action come out of those. Councilmember Murphy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, first of all, want to, again, thank the volunteers as well as the city's Recreation Department for the ongoing Food Bank Drive through distribution. It seems like it's been a great success in terms of planning, but it seems like the need is also there. So for those of you who don't know who are watching, every second Monday of the month at 9:00 AM at the Senior Center, there is available food available to you or any families that you know, and you don't have to be a Pinole resident, although there have been a number of folks who are. So I just wanted to, again, thank both the Recreation Department for continuing on that program, but also the volunteers who make it possible because it really is just a phenomenal thing what we have going on in Pinole. And I know that sometimes they're not always recognized, but we do see you. And again, thank you for your work. Wanted to notify the public that this month, most of the MCE board meetings have been canceled. Similar to our council meetings, we kind of take a moment off so that for this month will be canceled. But you can find all the board meetings or the information for our board meetings for September on MCEcleanenergy.org. And hopefully they won't be canceled in September. So if you are interested in making public comment on any of the items we have, we also have a public comment period similar to that of our city council. We allow opportunities for members of the public to actually call in or Zoom in, whatever you prefer. And you are more than welcome to make a public comment up to three minutes. And I just want to encourage that. I also, lastly, just want to encourage both business owners, but also residents to take advantage of the customer programs MCE has. Right now, you may be getting some advertisements. And if you're like me, probably a lot of advertisements because MCE is essentially doing a digital ads campaign, talking about what the organization is and how customers in Pinoleans like yourselves can utilize its programs. Anything from rebates to build your own electric vehicle charger, no cost assessments to build, you know, more energy-efficient homes. And if you're a business, we actually, as a board, we applied for a grant through the California Public Utilities Commission. And last month, we were awarded $4 million to help businesses like those in Pinole. Really, again, both with things like EV rebates, but also energy-efficient buildings and helping out with pretty much just upgrading, upgrades and things like that. So if you are interested in those things, feel free to reach out to me directly. Of course, our council information is on the website, but you can go straight to MCEcleanenergy.org to learn more. My last two points I just want to mention is this Sunday at 9:00 AM, I'll be hosting my coffee chat. We are still via Zoom just because of the time that we're in with the Delta variant. And we're trying to get people protected and safe still. But that will be on, at 9:00 AM on Sunday morning. So I hope to see any and all public, any and all residents there. And then this is a little far away, and I think there's one before me. I think it's actually the chief. But on September 15th, I will be participating in the Pinole for Fair Government Town Hall. And I am so, so excited to both talk to the host. I've been watching some of the, some of you all, actually, and seeing how it goes. So I am excited to talk to both the host and also talk to the Pinole community. So if you're interested, again, that's on September 15th. And it's a long way away, so I'll make another reminder, but just wanted to say I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Murphy. Okay, and Councilmember Toms?
Yes, and just to go on from your talk about Westcat being fare-free in September, I believe BART is also going to be at a reduced fare. So if folks are interested in trying out public transit, there's a way to do it for free or reduced fare. Let's see, already talked about compost. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I have been following along with all of the Measure X discussions. And some of the discussions really relate to some services here in Pinole. So I would encourage people that if they are available on Wednesdays and mainly on Wednesdays at 5:00 PM, to attend those meetings by Zoom. And you can make public comment. And right now, the committee is discussing how they're going to prioritize their recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. So some of the items that have come up, of course, is mental health issues, fire service, sustainability, and also library services and transportation services for people with disabilities and seniors. There's, you know, there's a whole bevy of services that have made their cases to this committee, but there are some that are very focused here in Pinole. So they do take public comment. And once they make their recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, I would hope that citizens and council members stay involved and engaged on promoting, you know, some of the issues that we really think are important. And that's all.
Thank you. Thanks for encouraging that participation. Given some of those services have been historically at the county level or under the responsibility of the county level that we can, as a city, possibly complement, but not always. So sometimes people don't distinguish that. And so wherever there's an opportunity to learn about who is providing the services that seem to be ongoing necessary, depending on people's various stages of life, you know, they sometimes aren't an issue if you're not the senior person who needs transportation, for example. But at some point, you will be, hopefully, we will be, right? Okay, thank you for all that. I'm going to move on to Item 11D, and that's Council Request for Future Agenda Items. And I'll begin with Mayor Pro Tem Salini.
No item, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tave?
So recently, I've received a lot of questions about permitting. And the city manager was, was good enough to give us a brief, you know, summary of what's going on. I'm wondering if we can do a 15-minute presentation just of the challenges that the permit department might be facing, you know, timelines, and just kind of give a little bit of time for the city manager to kind of explain to the public what, what the process is, how we're going to handle it. Apparently, I guess there's a backlog of permits as well. So just a presentation for a future agenda item.
Okay, do I have consensus on a presentation or update by our city manager to talk about the permitting process? And I think there are some good news on the horizon about alleviating that load. And so hopefully that'll translate to the public as well. Okay, I see a nod. I'll support as well.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we've got consensus there. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Toms, you've got your virtual hand up.
I do. I know this, this request was made at our last meeting, but I'm going to make it again, or I'm going to make it. Just given the UN's recent report, I'm wondering if we could have on the agenda the Climate Emergency Resolution.
Okay, I know that we've got something coming up related to climate. At least what, what the staff knows, what city manager knows about what the city's doing. So maybe, I don't know if it'll require an additional agenda item or whether such a discussion of a resolution would complement what you are planning. City Manager?
Yes, let me take a quick look at my agenda planner here to see, that is, we do have a scheduled item on that.
City Manager Murray, I thought when it was brought up, when I brought it up last month, it wasn't, I didn't move forward. I didn't think we had it planned. I don't think we had consensus.
Let me do this in two steps here. Let me glance at, so there had been a requested agenda item quite some time ago related, that was spurred by the county's adoption of its Climate Emergency Declaration Resolution. And then there were some, that changed a little bit as the council added on to that agenda item. So we're tentatively scheduled at the next city council meeting to have a presentation on, and this is the language as it reads, that is kind of a little different and broader than the adopting the county's Climate Emergency Resolution. The topic is "A Presentation on City Activities to Address Climate Change, Including in Relation to County Climate Emergency Resolution and City Sustainability Elements." So I was not interpreting that. And I don't believe the focus of that was a consideration of the county's resolution itself. I think the idea was, we wanted to see what the county's resolution raised in terms of issues, have a staff assessment of kind of a gap analysis, basically, and then to get city council direction. But the council has, you know, can provide whatever direction it wants. So if you would like it to be a report on climate action and consideration of a resolution that's the same as the county's Climate Emergency, we can make that the agenda item. And that creates no additional, you know, staff work. We can still get that on the next meeting agenda if that's the council's desire.
That would be the request.
Okay, do I have consensus on that? So we're going to have a focused kind of, what has the city, what is the city doing in relation to climate change? And then what can we do? And then a resolution to consider as well.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, looks like we got consensus on having that combo. Thank you. Was there anything else? Councilmember Toms?
Did we want to, well, can we put on the list to identify a council member to join staff on the Wildfire Committee?
Ah, okay. Okay, so want to add anything to that? Councilmember Murphy?
Uh, no, I think that was what I was stating earlier.
Okay, thank you. Is there consensus on that discussion? Okay, so we got a little bit more time on the future agenda about that. Thank you.
If I may, this, so the, the the resolution is to have staff and a city official, and the council's going to designate a council member to serve as that official. The resolution is to have, from staff's perspective, it's to participate in discussions. That's slightly different than how I heard it discussed earlier, which is, it's, that's a little different than participating in a formation committee because I think that assumes kind of a position regarding how we feel about the JPA. So I think of it at this point as there, you know, these discussions are not well-defined at this point. So it's not the convening of a coordinating or promotional committee. We're not at that point yet. It's really just, we're going to be talking with some stakeholders at cities about this idea. Does Pinole want to come? Yes, that's the kind of meeting we'll go to. So just to clarify from staff's perspective, it's not, we don't view our charge via the resolution that council adopted to advocate for the creation of the JPA at this point. Of course, come back to the city council to get your direction on that.
Yeah, I understand that. Councilmember Toms, do you have a different notion of this?
I'm just wondering if, because it was mentioned that if we had a council member involved in those early discussions, we could report that back. Staff could also report it back, but, and it really depends on how far these discussions go. I mean, it could be that staff participates and really feels that this isn't the direction we ought to be going. And then the council member would never become engaged if it gets dropped.
So I'm not advocating for that. I think it's perfectly fine, from my perspective, for both staff and council member to participate in the discussions. Any real direction or commitment by the city would require a majority vote of the city council. So we don't have to, you know, nobody can state, you know, position on the city's behalf without getting the full council. So I don't think, I don't see any problem with having council members participating in the discussion or maybe a specific, you know, an individually delegated council member and staff. And they might be different conversations with different stakeholders. And I think that's perfectly fine at this stage.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm sorry, do we, do we have a agenda item about this or not? It wasn't clear then.
If we have consensus or a majority approval of the council, then yes, there will be a future agenda item on assigning someone as the delegate.
Okay. I think the point of that is to come away with someone who actually is going to make the commitment to go on the dates of those discussions and then come back and report. Yeah? Okay. Is that it? Councilmember Toms?
That's it.
I want to go back to Councilmember Tave because I kind of jumped after your idea. Was there something else that you wanted, counsel, suggest, Councilmember Tave? No, okay, all right.
I think we're doing, I think we're doing great.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have, well, actually, I do. I'm going to have, I'm going to make a request because you all may be interested in this. I would hope that you are. So on the meeting planner is a request to have a discussion about a participating in a campaign that's being held. A participating in a campaign that's being held um, area wide, and that's United Against Hate Week. That is going to be conducted in November. So that's already on, has been approved by the council as something to be had. What I'd like to request now is some time for us to talk about activities that the city ought to have or plan for. Associated with that activity, because part of the discussion is to bring back a resolution for the city to participate in that campaign or to support it. That's one thing. The other, not a resolution, a proclamation, whichever is the appropriate means of doing so. But the other aspect of that is that I want it to be more than symbolic. I want it to also um, have, have some sort of planned activities. Um, that would involve staff possibly to, to say, okay, in Pinole we're doing X, Y, Z. And they may be things that are already going to be done, or piggyback on things that already um, are being done related to outreach. But I'd like us to have some time to discuss what those ideas might be. So that's my request to you all. For an agenda item to discuss um, Pinole, Pinole specific activities in support of United Against Hate Week.
I'm in support of having that on the agenda.
Me too. I'm in support as well, ma'am.
Thank you. I hope it can be a good fun brainstorming session for us. Thank you. Okay, and Councilmember Murphy?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to add one agenda item for hopefully soon, but I know the Christmas tree lighting is coming up. I'd love to discuss as a council. Um, how we can uh, just make sure we support that initiative as much as possible. Um, I'm happy to also put that into conversation with other, like, conversations coming up. I just want to make sure we have that allocated for um, conversation.
Yes, um, is that, again, I think that's an item on the planner, uh, city manager? Discussing about what more to do uh, related to tree lighting that was done last, two years ago, I believe.
But uh, maybe it's two different tree lights. Um, so there is a future council agenda item on. Uh, lighting street trees downtown, uh, and, but I, the way I heard Councilmember Murphy's. Uh, request, that was about our tree lighting ceremony.
Yeah.
Okay, so the tree lighting ceremony is, is uh, is funded in the budget and will take place. So um, I don't think uh, staff feels like any additional authorizations needed for that. That will happen. Of course, you know, in a COVID safe way, depending on the circumstances. And there will be a agenda item. At um, let's see, looking here, at, at our next council meeting, uh, discussing what to do about downtown tree lighting. We uh. City hadn't provided lights on street trees for many years in downtown. The merchants requested it. Uh, they were installed on kind of a pilot basis last year, and we're gonna circle back. To get council's direction on what to do for this holiday season. So that will be on next council meeting's agenda.
Okay.
I will uh, retract that tonight of them. Thank you.
Um, thanks for thinking about that. Um, okay, Councilmember Tate, you've got your virtual hand up?
I'm sorry, I just, that kind of triggered, um, I, I don't know if we should or if it's needed to have a presentation on the car show. Um, that's supposed to be coming up. Um, is that still happening? I mean, there's some people that are asking, is it happening, is it not? Um, and just kind of circling back and having a presentation, like this is what the car show is gonna be, these are the. The clubs that have signed up, you know, timeline, food trucks, that kind of deal.
Um, so it's definitely happening. I was gonna mention as part of my city manager report, um, I believe it is on September. Twenty, I'm dealing with my calendar here.
It's a Sunday, I know that.
Yeah, I believe that's September twenty sixth, yeah. Um, and we will be, so that's an event that's um, organized by a private party, but the city is gonna be collaborating on some outreach and communication. To get the word out. I think um, they recognize that they want to get the word spread more, so. Um, we can have a council presentation. Um, I can send a communication to you, and we'll be communicating about it through our normal. City communication channels. So if you think that will be sufficient, um, that is what I propose, but if you would prefer a council presentation at a meeting, we can do that as well.
I, I would leave it to the rest of the council. I mean, to me, it, it sounds like that's, that's fine. I, I just want to make sure that we promote it as much as possible. And, and we get um, some feedback from, from the community, and if we do a presentation, we might be able to get. Uh, some public comment on it and feedback. I, that's just my thought.
Yeah, I think helping promote it is, is, is one thing, and finding out how it went. Um, I mean, in some ways it's still tentative. Again, depending on what the county, I, I'm with you and the people who are organizing it. We'd like to see it happen, but hopefully it will, but. We don't know for certain, right? I think it was an update that you wanted. It is happening. Uh, maybe uh, as part, maybe an extended update, uh, city manager. As part of next meeting, as to where things are. Thank you so much.
Everybody else? Kind of cool with that? Okay, cool.
Okay, Council, uh, Mayor Protem Salini, and then we're gonna go on to the next.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to bring an item about communication, and I would like to know if it's possible. For the council to consider to have a, a quality mailer that can be mailed to the people of Pinole. And where we actually inform them of the resolution and keep them updated about what is happening in the city. Can be sent four times per year as much as we need, but I think mailing is still an important. Way of communicating to the resident of Pinole, and I think it'll be great to um, create a system where we can actually inform them via mail. Can I have a conversation? I just want to have a conversation on creating a mailer. And we can determine how often, what the budget, budget will be.
Uh, thank you. I'm, I'm thinking that this is part of the task that's gonna be um, one of the sort of like sub areas. Implementation activities that's uh, gonna be part of the communications and engagement plan. So we're gonna have sort of, you know, that consultant. That consultant firm providing the city some, some um, ideas on that. So I'm not thinking about having a separate discussion about a specific activity. It's a broader communication effort, as I see.
Perfect. If it, that can be included in it, so that, that's good to me. So I look forward seeing it.
Thank you, yeah. I think we all do. Yeah, I think we, wasn't it tonight that we approved under Council Calendar? A consultant's contract to have some of these wonderful ideas uh, come to, eventually come to fruition. So yeah. I think we're all eager to see some of that. Okay, um, I'm going, thank you all for your, your contributions. I'm going to move on and ask about. Item eleven E, city manager, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, just briefly, um, you know, uh, public health uh, issues uh, allowing, we're looking forward to supporting. Two upcoming community events. It'll be a great opportunity to reengage with the community. We have um, Coastal Cleanup. Um, it's no longer called Coastal Cleanup Day because activities can span the entire month. Uh, but that is coming up um, in uh, September. And we also have, as we discussed before, the Pinole Car Show coming up later in September. So I encourage you to um. Check our city webpage. The Coastal Cleanup's on uh, Saturday, September eighteenth, and the car show is on the. Sunday a week afterwards, uh, Sunday, September twenty sixth. So encourage you to check your normal city website and other city communication channels to. Uh, be reminded of the schedule for those events for which we're greatly looking forward, and that's it for me.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, City Attorney, do you have a report? And it's good to see you with us. Thank you so much.
Thanks, thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, nothing to report. I am doing well, and it's good to, to be here and be seen. So it's good to see you guys.
All right, stay well. Um, we've come to the end of our meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your attention and your ideas and. Just remain safe, healthy, continue to mask up, everyone. We're still in a pandemic. Hopefully, good things will come our way, but we gotta stay healthy, gotta stay. Safe and uh, adhering to distance. Between us still, um. We're gonna find ourselves doing that, and um, it's all, it's all for, for the better. Um, thank you, everyone. Have a great. Rest of the evening and rest of the week. And I'm adjourning this meeting to the next regular city council meeting of September seventh. In remembrance of Amber Swartz. Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.